All right, everyone. This is the pre-Gavel announcement. It is 2:04 PM on this Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, would you please do roll call?
All right, yes, Madam President. Trustee Hull?
Here, in person.
Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet?
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix?
Present.
President Smith?
Yeah.
Trustee Westlake?
Here.
Trustee Woodley, here, and Student Trustee Nicole Ramirez.
Here.
Or President accounted for.
Thank you, Clerk Woodley. We have a special guest in the audience. We are very honored to have with us today Anne Silver. She is the CEO of the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce and also the Chair of the Washoe County Library Board. So, Ms. Silver, would you please lead us in the pledge?
... One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Chair Silver, you have multiple in front. I could say CEO Silver, Chair Silver, Ms. Silver. Thank you so much. And now we'll move on to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washoe, Nuhmu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nuhwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes item 1.04 and Section 1 in its entirety, and we move on now to Section 2. These are our consent agenda items. So prior to today, I do have a request to pull consent item 2.03. The remaining items are 2.02 to 2.10, and again, we're already pulling 2.03. I see no lights on for pulling any of the other items. JJ, do we have any public comment on items 2.02, 2.04 to 2.10?
I have no cards for those items.
Very good. And I believe that we have a... Trustee Westlake and I have similar comments. Go ahead, you go first, and just make sure to state which item you're commenting on.
Thank you, President Smith. It's regarding 2.02, consideration of approval for the fiscal year 2425 third quarter report of average daily attendance and pupil-teacher ratios. I just think it's important to state, it's not lost on me, and I certainly know it's not lost on our teachers, and I know it's not lost on the district and the people that work in the district, but I really hope the state is listening because I find it a little bit ludicrous to say these are the numbers of students we want in a class, and they're not funded for that number, but then in order to make themselves feel better and possibly to make us feel better, they'll ask us to ask permission to have numbers in the classroom that really, truly are unacceptable. And I just, I need to call something out when I see it that is just, it's absolutely ridiculous. And I think the state needs to be thinking, when they, when they say there should be 16 kids in a kindergarten class, they're saying that for a reason. There shouldn't be more than 16 little bodies in a kindergarten class, and a kindergarten teacher shouldn't have to be managing more than 16 little bodies. And we want the best for our students, all of us do, and I'm sure the state does too. But let's just quit this ridiculous process of saying what is important, which our kids are, and our teachers are, and the job of educating these kids are important, and we know what the numbers are needed to be to educate our students in the right way. And then everybody just wants to feel good, and so we'll have variances, and we'll have ratios and configuration to inflate those numbers so that we can all feel good that we're really accomplishing something. And in the end, our students are suffering, our teachers are suffering, our administrators are suffering, our district is suffering because we know it's not right. We know we should be doing better. And the state, though, continues this funding process. I don't even want to get started on the weighted funding for the needs of specials. I'll let President Smith go there, but, you know, I just, I thought it was important, very important, to say it out loud, especially when it's teacher appreciation, educators' appreciation. If, if the state appreciates them and appreciates the work that they're doing, then give them all the tools that they need to be able to do the best job for our kids. Thank you.
Ooh, I'll just say ditto, because I, because I love that. You know, I bring attention to this every quarter when we, when we have to vote on this, and I'll just say ditto because you said everything, so thank you. All right, we've done public comment, so I'll be looking for a motion to approve item 2.02 and then 2.04 to 2.10.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Clerk Woodley. We have a second by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. Now we'll go ahead and open item 2.03. This is approval of finding a community of interest per Nevada Revised Statute NRS 288.1701 and the reclassification for professional district office positions that do not require an administrator license with the Washoe Professional Technical Association as indicated on the table in the staff report related to this item and as included in the support materials, and approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Washoe County School District and the Washoe Professional Technical Association for the inclusion of these positions into the Washoe Professional Technical Association bargaining unit as also included in the supporting materials. This is an item for possible action, and so I think we've got staff coming up for this item. Now would be a good time to come on up. We'll welcome our HR chief, Doug Owen, and our lead employment attorney, Kevin Pick. Trustee Hull was the trustee who pulled the item, and so we will invite you to begin.
Sure. All right, well, thank you. I was, I was not here in town last time when we, when we talked about this, so I just, I just want to say that I really, really appreciate everybody who's taken the last two weeks to spend quality time on this and for your office, Chief Owen, to call in, you know, give opportunities for everyone to talk about this and really look at it. This is not an easy decision in any way, and I think we can all agree that it's really, really hard, especially, we're, we're still a small town in a lot of ways, and we all know people impacted, and so taking the person out of this is really hard for a lot of us. I know that was something that I think we all felt heavily. As an educator, it felt really, really heavy for me, and, and I will tell you that my biggest concern was simply that we were taking the licensure out of these roles, and many of them work directly with teachers, do professional learning. So I had the opportunity to talk with you this morning, but I'd love for us to just make sure that we have this out there for everyone. Is the, is the, is this move less, is it only removing the admin requirement, but most of these positions will still require education experience?
Good morning, well afternoon.
Yes.
Doug Owen for the record.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for that question, and you are correct. So this just removes the administrator endorsement on their license from the requirements of the job, but we would still require the experience and qualifications, which in some cases would still be a teaching license, and even a potentially preferred teaching license, depending on the type of role that they're in, as well as years of experience that would qualify from, for that position.
Okay. And then the other question that, that we, we did get, if it still requires a teaching license, why not, why not a teaching contract then?
Yeah, good question. So, under the teaching contract in the association, WEA, the definition is an individual who holds a teaching license and is on the teaching salary schedule. These individuals don't sit on that schedule, and that schedule would necessarily be appropriate for them. So this comes back to community of interest, and are they more similar to than teachers or WISPA or WIPDA?
Okay.
So that's, that's the determination.
And so then the other thing that, that I was able to do is I went through each and every one of the job descriptions. Some of them are not recent job descriptions, and so what is the plan going forward for ensuring that, that these job descriptions are updated for their, what they're doing now and what this would look like?
Yeah, so, great question, again, Doug Owen for the record. So, earlier this year, I'll say January, we started putting together a job description template that requires a review of every job description every two to three years, depending on the job. Now you can imagine principals might be three years because they stay somewhat similar, but they shouldn't be not reviewed at all, we'll say it that way. Some might need a little more frequent review based on job duties change or laws change, and those people support specific laws.
Right.
Right? So in these, these individuals' positions, in this case, so we've gone through a review of them and understand many of them need to be updated for very immediately based on our conversations with employees, but they would fall into that every two to three years of a review of the job description.
Okay. And then I think my final question about this, and I think this is just some clarifying language, this, these changes are not saying that an administrator in the Administrative Association can't oversee a program. We're not saying only building administrators are in that. I myself have my admin, and it's focused on curriculum and instruction, but these particular jobs don't fall in line with the current contract for that association. I just want to make sure we're all clear on that, that that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so what we're asking is for the community of interest to be found closer to WIPDA than WISPA, and that's, to your point, a little bit, NAC 391160 talks about individuals that require an admin license and how an admin license can be used in a school district, and part of that is the director of programs. So those individuals aren't necessarily included in here as we define directors. Yeah, got it printed out and highlighted. So these individuals fall outside of that definition, and we're saying we don't require an admin license for that.
Okay. I think that was all the questions I had. I don't know if other people have questions, so.
If we don't have more questions, then we'll go to public comment and then come back here. You have a question? Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, President Smith. I just wanted to make sure, and I read through all that, but if, if the public could hear it again and, and refresh my memory, if someone is going to be instructing and mentoring administrators, then they would have the administrator license, and if someone is going to be mentoring and instructing educators, they would need to have the educator license, correct?
Doug Owen for the record again. So that is, that is our initial assumption. Now, there could be a situation, just for full transparency, right, where you say you have somebody that has had administrative experience, maybe 20 years of such, and they let their license lapse, for instance, right, and they're mentoring principals, if you will, right? So is it a requirement of that position for them to have an admin license? And we would say, yes, we need you to renew your admin license, so you could have a contingent offer of employment, assuming they're going to get it, right, if they have the qualifications to do so. Yeah.
JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
The board received emails from Crystal Edwards, Crystal Wilson, Joni Miller, Daryl Crowther, and Rachel DuPont on this item.
All right, well, I'll bring it back here either for further discussion or action, so I will look to the colleagues on this.
I will just share, so up until this morning, I, I was really, really opposed to this, simply because I, I felt like it was rushed, and it did not feel like we had a clear plan in place. One thing that I will, I will admit that, in my mind, it felt like that, however, I do see that HR has spent an awful lot of time in contracts and, and all this because we have moved deans and athletic directors and such. So perhaps the wheels had been working, but I do just want to recognize to the community, especially those impacted by this, that when it was put on the agenda, there was not a lot of notice. And so I do really appreciate that we were given the opportunity to give them an additional two weeks. And at first glance, reading through each of the job descriptions, really a lot of them felt like they needed to stay admin, but as I've had the conversations that we were able to have this morning and really look at this, I think that a lot of them are outdated in their language, and that is why they appear to need an admin. And so I, I, I know this is going to be really, really hard because change is really, really hard for people, but we have to do what is best for students. That is our job, is to do what is best for students, and to ensure that we're putting, we're, we're putting people in the correct communities of interest so that, that our, our district-level leadership has the opportunity to refine those jobs so that they serve our community best, that they serve our students best. I, I, again, this is really hard for me because I do feel very strongly about, about making sure that we're keeping educational and instructional positions, educational and instructional, and as long as we are putting this on record, that I don't want to see, as soon as someone retires, we remove that requirement to be licensed. I want to make sure that we're really clear that that's not what we're doing, that we still expect these people to have, you know, these positions to still have requirements of being educators for the vast majority. I, I will, I will concede that I, I'm okay with the moves, especially if each of these posi, each of the people in these positions has the opportunity to work with HR to really refine their job description, because some of them are giant job descriptions, too, and it's not, not humanly possible to do everything. So it's a great opportunity for us to really look at that. So that, that's where I stand on it. I, I walked in here this morning not, not being ready to vote on this, but I'm, I'm coming to terms with it, so. But I, I do want to, I do want the community, and especially the people in these positions, and the people who work regularly with them, know that this did not come lightly or easily for anybody, including our district staff and leadership.
So really quick, before you move on, I do realize that I do have a question. So for anyone who may have had a vacation because these changes were not contemplated, can you confirm that the district will work supportively with them to find solutions?
Yes, Doug Owen for the record again, but yes, we will work supportively with them. They're still under their existing contract until June 30th, of course, so nothing would change there until after July 1st, but we will work with them.
Thank you. July 1st is like tomorrow, so, especially in, in the world of, of HR, and I, I really want to just make a comment. There's been a lot of work, a lot of research, a lot of time, a lot of heart that has gone into this process. Having said that, I also believe and have for quite some time, long before I was with Washoe County School District as a trustee, that the heart of an organization is human resources. Everyone begins there, they stay there, and even after they retire, they're still there. And so it's extremely important that we maintain that heart and sometimes, in the speed of light, to solve problems, which I, I trust that we're doing that. I don't question that. We need to continue, as will our bargaining units, we'll need to continue to take care of our people and the heart. Change is hard, like trustee Hull said. We can manage that. As educators, I know, once we understand the why, we can get through the how, and we can work it out. So let's continue to maintain that heart. Thank you.
All right, well, then I will make a motion that we pass, that we approve, the finding a commu, do I need to read the whole thing? Finding a community of interest per Nevada Revised Statute and the reclassification for professional district office positions that do not require an administrator license with the Washoe County, with the Washoe Professional Technical Association as indicated on the table in the staff report related to this item, as included in the support materials and approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Washoe County School District and the Washoe Professional Technical Association for the inclusion of these positions into the Washoe Professional Technical Association bargaining unit. It's cut off, so I can't see the rest. Hold on. We're missing it. For the inclusion of these positions into the, also included in the supporting materials. Thank you.
Second it. Second motion, Madam.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Hull. We have a second by clerk Woodley. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. That closes item 2.03 and Section 2 in its entirety, and we will move on now to Section 3, our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And start with our very first item, item 3.01. This is the presentation of a Washoe County School District proclamation honoring Educator Appreciation Week in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. We have with us our presenter, Dr. Katie Louise Weir, Director of Professional Growth Systems. I know you're going to introduce all of our guests, but I think it's very important to say all of your names and for us to acknowledge you and to welcome you all in this room. So when I say your name pop up so we know who you are, starting with Julie Gilmore, 3rd grade teacher, Silver Lake Elementary School; Anthony Upton, Strategies Teaching Assistant, Winnemucca Elementary School, TA; Carol Molly, Kitchen Manager, Double Diamond Elementary School; Rebecca Davidson, Kindergarten Teacher, Gomes Elementary School; Gina Og, Administrative Assistant, North Star; Maxine Jamison, Secretary, Hunter Lake Elementary School; Carolyn Roblosky, Kitchen Manager, North Valleys High School; Matt Garrison, Site Facility Coordinator, Diedrickson Elementary School; Jan Rumble, Kindergarten Teacher, Incline Elementary School. Yeah. Lourdes Calzada, Santa Cruz School Mental Health Professional; Katie Baker, School Psychologist; Cody Lee, Fleet Man, Fleet Maintenance Supervisor; Eric Satello, Program Services Technician; Tamsin Avery, School Nurse, DePoli Middle School and Huffaker Elementary School. And I previewed one of these very special guests, but today's proclamation and all the effort that you are about to hear about are made possible by a couple really important community members that we have here in the audience, leading with the Executive Director of Strengthen Our Community, the indomitable Mike Kazmierski; yes, former Washoe County School District Board President, Katie Simon-Holland; and also here in recognition of our educators and the importance in our community, you all met, of course, Ms. Anne Silver, CEO, Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. And also providing support for today's item is the Executive Director of the Education Alliance, Sarah Hobbs-Gill. All right, Dr. Weir, take it away.
Good? Okay. I've had a lot of fun ones lately, so thank you all. Good afternoon, President Smith, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ernst, and esteemed members of our community. As was introduced, I'm Katie Louise Weir, Director of Talent Development, and our HR team proudly serves and supports 7,000-plus educators throughout Washoe County School District. Today, I'm honored to introduce an Educator Appreciation Month proclamation that procl, huh, that celebrates the heart of our school district, our educators. And every corner of our district, from classrooms to cafeterias, from buses to boardrooms, our employees serve as educators who nurture, guide, and inspire our students each day. This proclamation is not only a formal recognition, but a sincere expression of gratitude for the extraordinary efforts of our staff and the lasting impact they have on the lives of our students and the fabric of our community. We're especially grateful, as President Smith indicated, to the community leaders who've joined us this afternoon to champion our educators. You're going to get your workout in, everybody, because you're going to sit and stand again. But in our audience today, we welcome Mike Kazmierski, Executive Director of Strengthen Our Community. Welcome again, Mike. Anne Silver, CEO of Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. Welcome again, Anne. Katie Simon-Holland, former WCSD Board President and respected community leader. Hi, Katie, again. And last but not least, Sarah Gobstil, Executive Director of Education Alliance. Welcome back, Sarah. Together, they are leading a powerful teacher appreciation campaign to rally support for our educators. With 100% of the proceeds going directly to teachers, this campaign helps fund classroom supplies, critical instructional needs, and appreciation events. Donations are tax-deductible and can be made by visiting ed-alliance.org. We thank them for their vision, leadership, and unwavering support of our WCSD staff. Also in the audience today, as was previously mentioned, we're here to recognize and celebrate 13 educators across our district who serve in a wide variety of essential roles. I'd like to acknowledge that one of our honored guests this afternoon, a dedicated school mental health professional, is unable to join us as she is currently responding to a crisis at her school site where she serves. Her absence is a powerful reminder of the critical and compassionate work that our educators do every single day, often behind the scenes and in the moments that matter most. We thank her for her service and her dedication to the well-being of our students and our staff. Honorees, here we go. You're going to do it again, okay? So as I call your name, please stand once more to be recognized. Immediately following the conclusion of the proclamation, we'll take a photo inside with the Board of Trustees and the superintendent, then we'll ask your family and friends, all the supports, all the clapping, to please join us outside, behind the beautiful appreciation sign from Reno Yard Greetings out in the front lawn to celebrate all of you. Okay, here we go. Getting your exercise in, okay. Proudly serving as a school nurse and nominated by our superintendent, at DePoli Middle School and Huffaker Elementary School, we have Ms. Tamsin Avery. Proudly serving as a Site Facilities Coordinator, nominated by his principal, at Diedrickson Elementary School, we have Matt Garrison. Elementary School, we have Matt Garrison. Really excited to be here, perhaps one of our first, our Kitchen Manager, proudly serving the students at Double Diamond Elementary School, Carol Mealy. As a former kinder teacher, I feel kindred spirits with a few of our honorees today. We have a proud kinder teacher from Gomes Elementary School, Ms. Our newly titled HR System Specialist from our team, Mr. All right, I had a beautiful email from the principal about this incredible individual and how so many of her family has been to the school, served in the school in many capacities, so it was fun to hear all about that. Our incredible secretary at Hunter Lake Elementary School, nominated by her principal, A kindergarten teacher who took today off to celebrate and drive down the hill, a proud kindergarten teacher nominated by her interim principal, Gina Curtis, Ms. Jan Rumble at Incline. Administrative Assistant nominated by her principal and assistant principal from North Star, Ms. Gina Og. A proud Kitchen Manager nominated by her principal, I think this was my, one of my very first emails I got back right away, proudly serving at North Valleys High School, Carolyn Robleski. Tomas was very excited, right away. One of our proud school psychologists, nominated by Psych Services, Katie Bender, or Baker, darn it. Sorry, Katie. Katie Baker. Katie Bender serves us as a Special Administrator. Third grade teacher nominated by her proud principal from Silver Lake Elementary School, Ms. It was really fun to talk with Transportation about their nomination. We are nominating our Fleet Maintenance Supervisor from Transportation, Mr. And this last nominee, I met 10 years ago when he first started working in the school district, and I was principal at Westergard. He was nominated as the Strategies Teacher Assistant by his principal at Sarawinamucca, and that's Mr. What an incredible group of educators. We're deeply proud to recognize each of you today, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Ernst for the reading of the proclamation.
And before that, so proclamations are the theme of the day. So earlier today, Dr. Diane Nicolet and I, along with Kalen Evans, the President of the WEA, accepted a proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners this morning as well, and we're so incredibly grateful that not only is Superintendent Ernst reading a proclamation, but the Board of County Commissioners issued a proclamation in advance of Educator Appreciation Week, and then also the City of Reno and the City of Sparks at upcoming meetings will be honoring our educators. And we're just so incredibly grateful for that, because the Washoe County School District is ours. This is our district. It's not an organization that exists separately from our community. You are our community, and so we are incredibly grateful for absolutely all of you and so very thankful for all of our government partners and for everybody bringing it together so that our community can appropriately uplift, respect, and support the amazing educators here at the Washoe County School District. And I know before he reads the proclamation, Superintendent Ernst wants to say a few words.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you, Dr. Weir, and thanks to all for coming today, not only those that are being recognized, but the support systems behind them. That's an essential component in education, is the support systems we have for each other, and it's so nice to see everybody here together today, celebrating each other. From the start of this year and moving forward, we've really talked about every one of our staff, our educators, and people that play an important role in our student and our families' lives. And we're grateful for everybody that's here today and all that is being done for our students and our families. And so with that, we'll go ahead and read our proclamation. On behalf of the Washoe, on behalf of the leadership of Washoe County School District, and in recognition of the vital role each employee plays in the education and the development of our students, we acknowledge that all Washoe County School District employees, bus drivers, nutrition service staff, custodians, administrative personnel, or any other staff members are educators who contribute to a safe, supportive, and enriching learning environment for every student. Whereas educators play a fundamental role in shaping the future by educating and inspiring students to achieve their highest potential. And whereas educators dedicate their time, energy, and expertise to fostering a love of learning, critical thinking, and personal growth among students of all background and abilities. And whereas educators often go above and beyond their professional duties, and for that, we're extremely grateful. Serving as mentors, counselors, and role models who provide guidance and encouragement beyond the classroom. And whereas the impact of dedicated educators extends far beyond a single school year, influencing students for a lifetime and strengthening our entire community. Whereas educators have demonstrated extraordinary resilience and adaptability, particularly in the face of challenges such as technological advancements, shifting educational standards, and unprecedented circumstances affecting the learning environment. And whereas it is fitting that we recognize and express our deepest gratitude for the contribution of educators in our community and beyond. Now therefore, I, Joe Ernst, Superintendent of Washoe County School District, do hereby proclaim, May 5th through 9th, as Education, as Educator Appreciation Week, and that the Washoe County School District proudly honors and expresses profound appreciation for all educators in our school and educational institutions. The Washoe County School District acknowledges the invaluable contribution of educators in shaping of our community and commits to supporting initiatives that promote educational excellence. The Washoe County School District encourages residents to express their gratitude to educators and to support their ongoing efforts in fostering knowledge, creativity, and the leadership among students. And with that, to all of you, we express our deepest gratitude.
All right, everyone, that was a super happy item, and that closes item 3.01, and we move on now to item 3.02, Milestones and Momentum Presentation to provide the Board of Trustees an overview of progress made on Strategic Plan Goal 3, Safety and Belonging, for presentation and discussion only. And with us, we have Dr. Paul Lamarcas, our Chief Student and Family Support Officer, and then also today, and I believe that Dr. Lamarcas will also be bringing them up, we have Lucy Dugan, the Principal at Trainer Middle School, Deron Greider, student at Trainer, Delisa Crane, Director of Family School Partnerships, and Dr. Laura Davidson, our Director of Research and Evaluation. Thank you, Dr. Lamarcas.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the Board. For the record, Paul Lamarcas, Chief Student Services Officer. It is my honor to introduce our agenda item, and we're going to showcase for you some of the strategies and outcomes associated with Goal 3, Safety and Belonging. The lion's share of this presentation will be delivered by our Director of Family School Partnerships, Delisa Crane, and our Director of Research and Evaluation, Dr. Laura Davidson. Laura is also the architect of Milestones and Momentum. We owe her debt of gratitude, it's been an amazing year, and she's done amazing work. This is our sixth and final milestones and momentum for the year. It's also my pleasure to get to introduce Lucy Dugan, the Principal of Trainer Middle School, and her amazing student, Deron Greider. Lucy has done a wonderful job, if we switch to the next slide. Here are a couple quick stats, so they have this year substantially reduced chronic absenteeism, and knock on wood, I don't want to jinx anything, we got a month left. They did an amazing job with climate, having increased perceptions in 89% of the categories. Laura will tell you, I think that's in like 18 of 21 or something of that nature. And their parent-teacher home visit program is great, and they've made many visits, and I think they've probably made visits beyond this 26, since this was a little bit dated. I've known Lucy just for a little while. I got to meet her first when she was at HUG High School, and this year, she's done an amazing job at Trainer. You know, we're one of the offices that provides support for schools, and we have lots of smart people who have lots of good ideas, and they always want to help. And so our principals are inundated with, we can do this for you, we can do that for you. I really respect Lucy, because she has been willing to say no, and that might sound strange, but what it tells me is she's discerning, she knows what her building needs, and she knows when they need it. And so I have nothing but respect for her and her leadership, so without further ado, Lucy Dugan and Deron Greider.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and the Board of Trustees for having me. My name is Lucy Dugan, I am the Principal of Trainer Middle School. Quick history, I was born and raised in Reno, I'm a proud graduate of the Washoe County School District. I was a Huffaker Hawk, a Pine Patriot, and a Galena Grizzly, it's good to be a Grizzly. Graduated from UNR and then taught for five years back at Galena, taught English at Galena and Innovations High School, was a dean at HUG High School for a couple of years, and then became the Assistant Principal at Trainer for three, and this is my first year as principal at Trainer. Before I begin my remarks about the amazing work we've done, I have to thank the staff at Trainer Middle School. There, I would not be presenting in front of you today without their incredible strength and willingness to go along with some of my ridiculous and silly ideas, and, excuse me, from my cafeteria staff to my office staff, my admin team, my math coach, my counselors, my school social worker, I just would not be here without them, and we would not have made the progress we've made this year with all of them.
All right, everyone. That was a super happy item. And that closes item 3.01. And we move on now to item 3.02. Milestones and Momentum Presentation to provide the Board of Trustees an overview of progress made on Strategic Plan Goal 3, Safety and Belonging. For presentation and discussion only. And with us, we have Dr. Paula Marca, our Chief Student and Family Support Officer. And then also today, and I believe that Dr. Marca will also be bringing them up, we have Lucy Dugan, the Principal at Trainer Middle School, Deron Greider, student at Trainer, Delisa Crane, Director of Family School Partnerships, and Dr. Laura Davidson, our Director of Research and Evaluation. Thank you, Dr. Marca.
Thank you, President Smith. Superintendent Ernst, members of the Board. For the record, Paula Marca, Chief Student Services Officer. It is my honor to introduce our agenda item. And we're going to showcase for you some of the strategies and outcomes associated with Goal 3, Safety and Belonging. The lion's share of this presentation will be delivered by our Director of Family School Partnerships, Delisa Crane, and our Director of Research and Evaluation, Dr. Laura Davidson. Laura is also the architect of milestones and momentum. We owe her debt of gratitude. It's been an amazing year, and she's done amazing work. This is our sixth and final milestones and momentum for the year. It's also my pleasure to get to introduce Lucy Dugan, the Principal of Trainer Middle School, and her amazing student, Deron Greider. Lucy has done a wonderful job. If we switch to the next slide. Here are a couple of quick stats. So they have, this year, substantially reduced chronic absenteeism. And knock on wood, I don't want to jinx anything. We've got a month left. They did an amazing job with climate, having increased perceptions in 89% of the categories. Laura will tell you, I think that's in like 18 of 21, or something of that nature. And their parent-teacher home visit program is great. And they've made many visits. And I think they've probably made visits beyond this 26, since this was a little bit dated. I've known Lucy just for a little while. I got to meet her first when she was at HUG High School. And this year, she's done an amazing job at Trainer. You know, we're one of the offices that provides support for schools. And we have lots of smart people, who have lots of good ideas, and they always want to help. And so our principals are inundated with, "We can do this for you, we can do that for you." I really respect Lucy, because she has been willing to say no. And that might sound strange. But what it tells me is she's discerning, she knows what her building needs, and she knows when they need it. And so I have nothing but respect for her and her leadership. So without further ado, Lucy Dugan and Deron Greider.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and the Board of Trustees for having me. My name is Lucy Dugan. I am the Principal of Trainer Middle School. Quick history, I was born and raised in Reno. I'm a proud graduate of the Washoe County School District. I was a Huffaker Hawk, a Pine Patriot, and a Galena Grizzly. It's good to be a Grizzly. Graduated from UNR, and then taught for five years back at Galena. Taught English at Galena and Innovations High School. Was a dean at HUG High School for a couple of years. And then became the Assistant Principal at Trainer for three. And this is my first year as principal at Trainer. Before I begin my remarks about the amazing work we've done, I have to thank the staff at Trainer Middle School. There, I would not be presenting in front of you today without their incredible strength and willingness to go along with some of my ridiculous and silly ideas. And, excuse me, from my cafeteria staff to my office staff, my admin team, my math coach, my counselors, my school social worker, I just would not be here without them. And we would not have made the progress we've made this year with all of them. To start with, safety and connection. We've done a lot of work this year with inviting families to the school. We have assemblies every Wednesday for different grade levels. And we've invited families to attend those, so they can participate in basketball games. The Renovation Foundation recently came to celebrate our success with attendance. And we had a number of families come celebrate their kiddos with perfect attendance at that assembly. During the first semester, we held over 100 data meetings with families and counselors. So families got to kind of understand where their student was with chronic absenteeism, with their grades, with their S-Back scores from the previous year, as well as access scores. And then from those meetings, was able to create a plan for the year for them. One of my favorite things that we've done this year to build connection with families is I had, I asked families to write good luck notes to all students who were doing the access test and the S-Back test, so that before they took their test, they got a love note from their family member. I brought two of them here today and got permission from families to read them to you. So this one is from a mom. And I won't say the student's name, but says, "Dear student, good luck on your test. I know you will do well, because you're just like me, smart and pretty. Always remember that I love you, and that I'm always here to support you. Good luck, love you, Mom." And then the second one is from an older sister. "Hey kid, good luck on your S-Backs. I'm hoping you're surprised by these notes. Hee-hee. I know you mentioned to me that you're not too stressed about these exams, but still do your best. Try to get the highest score, okay? So I can show you off to all my friends just how smart my little sister is. But no worries, if you don't do well, I'll still show you off, just as long as you try your best. I'll always be proud of you, and will support you no matter what. Okay, kid, I love ya, and good luck again on the exam." So those are just two of the notes that we got to give to kiddos before they took their test. And it was just a really special thing to see these parents write really silly things, write really emotional things to their kids. The other thing is, my staff calls home every week for at least one positive phone call home, which has really built some positive momentum with our community. And then we've added a lot of clubs and activities at Trainer, which has really increased after-school programming and just more joy in the building. For Pillar B, this is all coming from our Student Climate Survey. We increased five points for stronger, more positive relationships with kids. We actively have been working on building those relationships with students throughout the year, being really proactive and really intentional in building those relationships. For school safety, this one's really important to me. We've increased by seven points, school safety. One of the things that we've done is, we've had three really specific rules that we follow at school. Be ready, be respectful, and be safe. And the kids hear those rules very consistently, all day, every day. We also had a number of blind spots in our building with cameras. And so we installed about seven, or sorry, eight cameras, and repositioned a number of them, so we had fewer blind spots in the building, which increased safety significantly. And then finally, I switched the layout of the school. In the past, sixth and seventh and eighth graders were passing the whole school and created a lot of tardy issues and attendance issues. And so I put all of our sixth graders on one side of the building, and some of the eighth graders on the other side, which really cut down on tardiness and just some behavior issues. And then we've also decreased bullying by nine points on the climate survey. Again, building those strong relationships with kids. And then there's more access to support. So building in systems in the building that make it easier for kids to get the help that they need. And then finally, Pillar D. We, my Assistant Principal Dana Robert is a wizard at attendance. And she's been working with a couple of my departments at school, having a buddy system for our chronically absent students, so that those teachers meet with those kiddos whenever they see them, and talk about things outside of school that just builds those connections. I've also created a daily check-in with our counseling and admin team for our orange students. That's the 10% to 20% absent students. And we check in with those kiddos every single day. And if they're not there, we call home, we find out what's going on, and then try to get them to the building. When they get off the orange list, they get free noodles on Friday, which is their absolute favorite thing. So that's a fun way that we celebrate them, to get them off our chronic absenteeism list. And then just more consistent messaging with families. I send at least two text messages, connecteds, every week to families about what's going on at school. I also have our Trainer Instagram page that posts every week about what's happening at Trainer to get kids and families on the same page of what's happening, and be excited about coming to school. And then finally, my favorite portrait quality is a resilient learner. Kids at Trainer have been through a lot, and they come to school every day despite a lot of those challenges. And they come to learn, and to play, and be silly. And they're the most magical humans on the planet, and they inspire me every single day. That being said, I'd like to introduce you to one of my students. This is Deron Greider. He's actually in the Viking head right there in that picture. That's Deron. Deron, he's our mascot in more ways than one. Deron is an eighth grader at Trainer Middle School. He's also a Dean's Future Scholar. Yes. I had the pleasure of working with Deron's older siblings, Destiny and Daryl, when I was a dean at HUG High School. When I moved to Trainer as the Assistant Principal, I have a friend, Ally Galis, who just won the Milken Award a couple weeks ago. She is my friend, and worked at Duncan at the time, and told me about this boy named Deron, who is going to come and just make the world a better place. And she was right. Deron is very excited to be here today. And he is Trainer's biggest cheerleader. We've been practicing, he's ready. He is genuinely Trainer's biggest cheerleader. He does a really spectacular impression of me screaming, "Go Vikings!" down the hallway. It's a little high-pitched, but it's all right. And so I just wanted to introduce you to Deron Greider.
Oh, Lord, I was nervous. Okay, for my safety and connections, I think for the conflicts between people... Oh, my bad, y'all. I'm so sorry. There are fewer conflicts between kids, because there's more staff to talk to, and the rules are more clearer. So I am so glad that there is less conflicts than the previous years. There was a lot of conflicts. But not anymore, because Ms. Lucy has enforced the rules. And I'm glad everybody has the respect to listen to those rules, and they like, don't fight back with her. And for Pillar B, Ms. Lucy and Ms. Franco, one of our Spanish teachers, they went to my grandma's house. Like, they played with my baby cousin. And my grandma just really thinks they are like incredible people to be around. And they just think they're such good inspiration for me and all my family. And at my little, they just teased me there. That's all, they was just teasing me. So, and at my little sister's volleyball game, Ms. Lucy was there, she was just playing with my niece. She was like, "Ms. Lucy is just someone that you can be yourself around, and she's not going to judge." She's just so warm-hearted in different ways. And like, that's it. Okay, for Pillar D. We have fun activities. I'd love to have fun. Like, you seen me running down the hallway, like, just being so happy. And we have our student versus staff basketball game. Our assemblies, and field trips, and et cetera. I want to shout out Trustee Woodley for going there. Like, he put some work in, but it wasn't... But we still won, it's okay. For me to go to school, it's not just always there. Like, I'm not always there to learn. It's for me to have fun and learn at the same time. There's just so many things that I can do at school. It's not just learning. There's clubs that I can do, there's sports, and like, a whole bunch more that I can be doing there. And for my favorite portrait quality is physically and mentally healthy. In order to learn, we all have to be physically and mentally healthy. Thank you for your guys' time today.
Deron, you're so impressive. So, okay, so physically and mentally healthy. So what sports do you like to play? And are you in any of the clubs at your school?
I did wrestling. Like, I joined halfway through, because I got in trouble. So, I did wrestling, I tried out for basketball. And I think that's all I'm doing.
That's great. Thank you so much for being involved like that. That's awesome. Great work.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express my gratitude. Ms. Dugan, she has way too much energy. When I first met her, I was going, wow, okay. But I really appreciate all the things that you've done there, and all the changes you've made, and how much you've just brightened up the school. And the visits have been amazing. I love visiting your school. So thank you. And I'm going to get you next year. Oh, you won't even be there next year!
I'm not going to HUG. I'm going to Debbie Smith. I'm going for teaching and training.
We might have an internship ready for you. Child labor laws, don't worry about that.
All right. Well, I think I'll take a quick moment. Mrs. Dugan, thank you very much for your leadership. You've done a tremendous job in your first year at Trainer. All of us are very proud of the work that you're doing there. And your enthusiasm, and your dedication, and your passion for kids is really showing through and through. And so we very much appreciate that. You're welcome. And Deron, I want to say, thank you for being here today. Thank you for putting up with Trustee Woodley on the basketball court. We appreciate that. But I also wanted to just say, thanks for your courage. Thanks for coming and stepping in front of all these adults in this big meeting, and being able to just talk to us and tell us about your experience, because that really helps us get better, the more we understand our students' experience. And really appreciate your leadership in the building. I have a feeling that Trainer's success is a lot due to your leadership, and all that you're bringing in that building as you're walking the halls and talking to kids. And so, you know, that leadership is going to serve you really well as you keep going into teaching, and maybe going that path in front of you. So very much encourage you, and everyone is here to help you as you're taking that next step at Debbie Smith Academy. So with that, Deron, we want to acknowledge we have an award here that we have behind you. And this is Deputy Superintendent McMaster. She is presenting our award for you being an exemplary Washoe County School District student. So congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
All right, while they're walking out, I want to hear another round of applause for reducing their chronic absenteeism by 15%. All right. And so now, part two.
President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. Uh, for the record, Dr. Laura Davidson, Director of Research and Evaluation. It's really my pleasure to be up here with one of the smartest, uh, most creative, incredible women in this entire district. My co-collaborator for many, many years, uh, Delisa Crane, Director of Family School Partnerships. And together, we're gonna present on some of the action steps around Goal Three, which is the last set of action steps we're gonna be reporting on this year. And I think it's a high note to end on. And, uh, what we just witnessed with our Spotlight School, that is what this entire effort is about. It's about, uh, bringing joy into our schools so students want to come every single day and be present and learn. Okay, so we'll start with just an overview of the data. So again, Goal Three is all about safety and belonging. So there are three metrics here and then we'll end the presentation with our fourth metric associated with Goal Three. So these ones, I think, uh, we're just so incredibly proud of. We're gonna hear some more detail about it in a minute. But the fact that we have nearly doubled the number of schools that have accessed the Home Visit Program in a single year is just a testament to some incredible hard work in Delisa's department. And I know Rochelle Solonia is back there. Um, and just a huge, huge amount of effort to make sure that our schools are out there and accessing this opportunity to get to know families on a really personal level. Our second metric is around volunteer applications. So we have seen an uptick in volunteer applications. And that's even before the large-scale campaign effort that we're gonna start in the fall. So incredible that we've already increased volunteer applications. And then our third measure that I can say we have been just tracking, uh, very consistently, perhaps religiously, is chronic absenteeism. So us and every other district in America and probably across the world have struggled with chronic absenteeism past, uh, post-pandemic. And it's something we've been tracking all throughout the year really diligently. And we were so happy to see in March, very close to the end of the school year, so we're feeling optimistic about this, that it will remain. But we have seen almost a two percentage point decline in chronic absenteeism. And I cannot tell you how much effort went into reducing by two percentage points. When you go out and talk to schools, I'm sure you're hearing nothing but the hundreds of efforts that they're doing every single day to reduce that number. So huge, huge global effort around chronic absenteeism. And we're just so pleased to see it and hope it stays through the rest of the year. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Delisa who's gonna start talking about some of our efforts around volunteer services.
President Smith, Superintendent, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. Uh, for the record, I'm Delisa Crane, uh, the Director of Family School Partnerships. Um, and everything I'm about to talk to you about with volunteer services really is with the leadership and collaboration of Nicole Vasquez and Anna Aguilar, our small but mighty volunteer services department. So we are very excited because next week we'll be launching the Pilot Volunteer Management System Raptor. So we're taking everything online. We have three schools that will be trained next week. So that's Colina High School, uh, Dilworth Middle School, and Desert Heights Elementary School. It's pretty exciting. We have 13,000 volunteers already in the system who've been vetted and cleared and are ready to go and have their clearance, uh, for the next five years. So that's exciting to us. Um, because that's that much less paperwork that is going to have to be shovel, shuffle, shuffled? Not shoveled, shuffled between our schools and our offices and take a little weight off of our secretaries and our central office staff. So we're really excited about that. Um, the application can, next slide? The application will be online, so I think our families and community members are going to love this. It, our busy parents, uh, at nighttime, after they've put their kids to bed, can apply on their phones in English and Spanish. Those approvals will go through for our supervised volunteers will go through seamlessly. And once they're approved, they will show in the database so our school secretaries can see that they're approved and, and ready to go. So we don't even have to shovel, shh, once again, shuffle, not shovel. Shuffle those papers around. Um, and then, as you can see on the right, we're really excited in the fall to launch this with all of our schools. And every school, um, our talented communications office has helped us to create a promotional package for every school site. They'll have fence banners, they will have posters, they will have, uh, postcards to send home with families with a QR code. So it will be really seamless. We'll let the community know that we are ready to welcome you into our schools once you've been approved. Um, and it's going to make it incredibly safe as well.
So you, I am so excited that this is now online. Thank you. Like, I can't even tell you how grateful I am as a parent who volunteers and I have other family members who volunteer. And so to everybody else who's watching that might think like, oh, it's a website, you're good. This is just truly amazing. So thank you so much for making this so easy because it's been such a barrier for some volunteers to be able to go to the office during school time. And, um, just thank you so much. Like, this is such a great way to bring down a barrier so that we can open our doors to all the people who want to help us in our mission of educating kids.
It's been a great collaborative effort and our secretaries and our principals and many of our staff helped us to choose the best system, so.
And you mentioned safety. Thank you. Background checks, how does that look with this system?
So it's, it's going to look a little bit different depending on the level of volunteers. So if you're a supervised volunteer, um, we will be running background checks through JDP, which is connected to Raptor. Um, so school police used to do those checks and now this will be seamless through a third party. Um, so we'll, we'll check for all the necessary requirements and per NRS, um, we do that every five years. Um, and so that application will be cleared for five years. For unsupervised volunteers, so for volunteers that go out of state or on overnight trips or non-paid coaches, those have a higher level of access to students and those folks per NRS still need to be fingerprinted. Um, so the system, the beautiful thing about the system is, is, uh, our unsupervised volunteers and our non-paid coaches can download the forms that they need, fill them out, go get fingerprinted. And then when they fill out their online application, they'll be able to upload those forms into the system. And then our HR department, um, will clear their forms, look, make sure that all of the checks come back necessary from the state of Nevada. And then once they're cleared, they'll just click approve and that will go straight into the, um, database. And then our, uh, secretaries and our school front office staff will see that that volunteer has been approved. There is another level of check in that, um, it, the system also has the capability to scan every single one of the 13,000 volunteers on a monthly basis. So even though five years may sound like a long time, if something happens, um, uh, and we have, uh, somebody, uh, come up that shouldn't be with our kids, um, we'll know right away. Um, and then one thing that I would be remiss, and Nicole really wanted me to mention this, something that she's very excited to do next year, is we will have real-time data on our volunteers. So when that volunteer checks into a school and runs their, um, driver's license, we know when they're there, we'll know who's in the building, we'll know exactly what they're doing with our kids, if they're reading, if they're supporting a recess duty, if they are in the cafeteria. And we'll also see who our top volunteers are. So Nicole's very excited to start a recognition program for our top volunteers who give a lot of hours in our school sites for free.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, it sounds pretty comprehensive. Uh, can you, and I was gonna hold off on my questions till the end, but since we're jumping on volunteers, I, I have a handful of questions. Could you give us a little deeper dive on some of the volunteer opportunities that are available in our schools?
Um, you know, every school site is different. So at our high school, they might have, um, Career Day, uh, interviews. And so that's another function of the system and we're just digging into this. They will be able to, a school site will be able to post the upcoming opportunities at their school site, list the date, the time, the hours, and then they'll be able to shoot an email to all the volunteers that have specified their school site and say like, we have these upcoming opportunities, we're looking for 10 people who can help interview our kids for Career Day. Um, and so families will be able to go in and click, I'd like to participate in that. And schools will have a nice list of volunteers, of families that are, or families or community members, cleared volunteers who are interested.
And volunteers inside the classroom as well?
Yes, absolutely.
And you said, was that the number 1,300 I heard, uh, that, that are already in the system?
Right now, we have 13,000 volunteers.
13,000, that's remarkable.
13,000 volunteers.
That's what I thought you said, but I, I, that's why I'm asking again. That's amazing.
We are.
Since I've been on the board, there's just, you know, and I'm not gonna sugarcoat. I mean, there's just a lot of ridiculous narratives out there that somehow, uh, you know, the, we, we want to restrict people from coming in the classrooms, coming in the schools. And clearly, that's not the case. Particularly when you have an online system where you have 13,000 people to come in. If you're concerned about education, you can come to our schools, you can see what actually happens. So thank you for, for spiriting that. That's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you, ladies. And honestly, I love the word shovel. Because, really, because before, before, the process was so cumbersome. It was actually shoveling a mountain with a tablespoon. And you ladies and others, thank you so much for working so hard. Because we can make a difference. The, the more people that are getting involved and helping us with this work, we are gonna make a difference. So get in our boat, everybody, because we're going places. Um, and this streamlining and the access so easy, um, it's, it's amazing. And it does, speaking to what Trustee Mayberry said, it does show our interest and our commitment to having others help us with this work. We're not saying, no, we got it covered, we got it covered. We're like, help us. We, we can do this and we can do it together. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I feel really lucky because I get to talk about all the happy things in the district, so. Um, I also have the absolute pleasure of supporting our Parent-Teacher Home Visit team. And, uh, under the leadership of our coordinator Rochelle Solonia, um, and the certified specialist Kelly Carr, um, that you, uh, gave to us as part of the strategic plan. We've made significant progress this past year, as Laura mentioned. And I think Duran talking about the authentic relationship that was built between his grandmother and Ms. Dugan is, um, a, a perfect example of that. So as you can see, we've increased the number of schools by 60%. Last year, we had 25. This year, we have 43 schools. Um, Kelly and Rochelle have done a tremendous amount of professional learning and increased the number of educators by 100. So we have 450 educators participating in the Parent-Teacher Home Visit Program. And the beautiful thing about that is that's authentic connection relationships, which are the foundation for everything we do in education. Um, and so one of the things they did this past year was to implement a family, a family survey to understand from our family's voice the impact home visits have on their relationship. And so I'd like to read just a short quote to you from one of our families. "This program and the time the teachers took to come out and spend with my son and get to know our family's dynamic was touching. I was pleasantly surprised when I learned about it and just gave me more confidence as a parent that the amazing teachers are doing what they love. I'm blessed to have my son have such amazing teachers. He's always so happy when he gets home and gets excited about every day." So I think, um, when we listen to our family's voices, it lifts us all up because that's who we're serving and, and their children are the most important things to them. So, um, we also, you heard from my colleague last month, Trish Schaefer. She talked about fifth grade success plans and we are connecting all of these pieces. So as one of the pieces of Parent-Teacher Home Visits is teachers can have the option to do transition visits over the summer. So that big transition from elementary to middle school, a teacher from fifth grade who knows that student well can partner with a teacher from the middle school and over the summer they can do a warm hand, handoff. Um, and then finally, um, just each year, we award and highlight our top schools and educators for Parent-Teacher Home Visits. It's one of my favorite events of the year. We host a mini-conference. Um, and we're just grateful. This is, uh, Lemon Valley Elementary School from last, from this past year. They were one of our top home visiting schools. Um, and we're really grateful too for your investment in home visits. I know several of you, Dr. Nicolet, Trustee Nicolet, uh, Trustee Westlake, Superintendent Ernst, for your past and future home visits. And I know some of you have been on home visits in past years as well. So we will always invite you to come along with our educators. Um, it is truly a, a meaningful, authentic experience. And with all, and with that, I'll turn it back to Laura.
All right, thank you. So our last action step is all-around data, my favorite thing to talk about always. Um, so the efforts in this area were to, we know how busy schools are. Um, and one of the things that we wanted to see most this year in the creation of our data tools that we give to our schools is better integration of data points together to get to an understanding of why are students not coming to school? A simple number of a chronic absenteeism rate tells you nothing about that. It only tells you that students are missing school. And so when we designed tools this year, uh, to support our schools, that was the intent we had in mind. How do we get to the root causes behind attendance and to school climate? So how can we help schools who are very busy understand that data pattern really quickly? And then they do the hard work of intervening with our students. So we expanded or developed seven data tools this year for enhanced tracking around absenteeism and climate. I'll talk about some of those on the next slide because I think the visuals will really bring them to life. Um, but we also did some additional research projects. So one of the projects that we did under the, um, guidance of Dr. Sarah Trecher in my office is looking at all of the positions in our schools that support attendance. This is school social workers, re-engagement specialists, attendance officers, family graduation advocates, and looking at their different support models and understanding, wow, what are the best strategies that each of them are using so that we can guide our principals in how to deploy those resources most effectively to support attendance? I'll talk about the second one in a moment too. Um, and then I just wanted to emphasize that, uh, we didn't just create data tools. We also supported principals with, uh, ways to collect information locally because we know attendance, the reasons behind attendance are, uh, very specific to the context and the population sometimes. So in December, we trained principals on several tools that allowed them to collect some qualitative information to help them really understand the root causes of attendance in their buildings. So like, one of those was a five-minute chat with students where it's a protocol where an administrator can randomly select a couple of students and do an interview with them to better understand some of the reasons behind attendance challenges. Who are the teachers that nobody ever misses? What can we learn from them? What are they doing? Because that's really gonna bring that data to life and be much more actionable than any single number could be. Uh, we never stop working in the Office of Accountability, of course, and we're always trying to innovate and push boundaries. Uh, many of you have, of course, met Dr. JT Stark in my office and have heard probably about the early warning system he developed in high school. We are trying to extend that effort down to younger grade levels because the earlier we can catch students and intervene with them, the better off they are. We never want to catch a student at the end of a school year after they've missed 90 days of school and failed all of their classes. So some really exciting work upcoming in that area. So these are just a few of the data tools that we either expanded or created newly this year. I'll start on the top left with the, the triangle one. That's our attendance dashboard. It's in our data warehouse, which is a live data warehouse accessible to all our school staff and district personnel. And it updates live daily. It, I would put that data warehouse, uh, which is really the brainchild of Dr. Stark against any single other one in the country. I guarantee ours is better, not that I'm competitive, um, but a little bit. And it's because of the really thoughtful way he designs reports in collaboration with our IT staff, Brandon Barella, and Irene Noe, who code the data on the backend. Um, but the intent behind each of these reports is to get to a student within two clicks. And we believe that. It's our motto in our office that behind every data point is a child. So we want to make sure educators are getting to that child as quickly as possible. This particular report, um, again, the intent with all of these reports is to intervene as quickly as possible. So one of the features that we've been emphasizing a lot of this, on this report this year is our consecutive days absent. So we don't want people looking at this report in, say, May and trying to figure out who's chronically absent. We want to catch them in September when they've missed three days in a row or more and call those families and figure out what is needed there. So this report enables people to work really, really quickly on those interventions. The middle one there, that's ABC Elementary, that's our new data at a glance. Uh, you can think of it as like an early warning system for a school. So area superintendents get these updated monthly. And even without looking at the numbers, you could zoom away from it 20 feet and see, is this school generally trending in the right direction? Are they generally in the green? Are they generally in the red on all kinds of indicators? So that really enables our, uh, district and schools also have access to it to know, are we in the right direction? Or do we need to help support that school in a couple of different areas? On the right-hand side is a snapshot of our latest data story on our public-facing website, wcstddata.net, all about school climate. So that entire website is available to the public. It gets about 15,000 hits a year. So it is accessed pretty sizably in our community. And the intent is to explain the nuance of some of our most complex data. And I think this is a particularly fun one. If you all remember Ivy Bottomall, who was your student rep two years ago, she wrote this story when she was our intern. And it's all from the perspective of, of a student. Why does climate matter from a student perspective? So a really lovely job from our wonderful intern. And then at the bottom there is our last one that I'll talk about tonight. This is our student climate data. Of course, we, um, added something on our new dashboards this year where every single question on that survey, schools can disaggregate by students who are chronically absent or not chronically absent. Again, students don't show up to school because they feel like they don't have a trusted adult. They're worried about safety. They don't feel engaged in the material. So when schools can access this report, now they can really understand, gosh, what are my chronically absent students saying about my school environment that I can help support? So we're really excited about the potential of that report. Okay, so I highlighted that some of our work has been around research and deep research into attendance. This is, uh, part of a lovely partnership that we've had with Northwestern University, who, free of charge, has been doing really any analyses that we've, uh, thrown at them. Um, and we've taken them up on those. So we asked them to look at our absenteeism rates in grades K through eight and our I-ready outcomes. I think we've all clicked on an article in the past four years and learned that attendance has an impact on academics. But it is totally different when you can see what that impact is with the kids in our building and in our schools. So when they isolated the impact of chronic absenteeism on I-ready outcomes, we see that for math, it's a 7.4 percentage point reduction in math when students are chronically absent versus when they're not. And about a 4.5 percentage point decline for ELA. So I think that's particularly illuminating because it's telling us that when kids miss math, that's the hardest thing to come back from. Uh, math really builds on itself. And if, uh, we have students miss math, that's really difficult to come back from. And you can imagine it year over year how that adds up. I think the other outcome that was really interesting from this 100-slide deck that they provided to us is that, uh, the negative association of absenteeism is the most detrimental in kindergarten. Meaning when kids miss school in kindergarten, that has the worst impact, especially on reading. So sometimes we think about, well, you know, it's kindergarten, maybe how much are they learning? I would never say that, but I've heard it said. Uh, this is telling us it's the exact opposite. We have got to make sure that we're shoring up our attendance habits in kindergarten and getting support because we want these kids to have a strong start through the rest of their pathway. So I think a really actionable data point for us. We need to do some supports around kindergarten and really shore that up. Okay, so I promised we'd have one more metric associated with Goal Three. And this is data from our student climate survey. This is a survey that we administer to about 30,000 students in grades five through 12. It's our single biggest student voice. Uh, we've been doing it for about 14 years. And I think in April last year, I was here in front of you and some of the data was not trending in the right direction. Or it's been flat, especially post-pandemic. Um, this year, we were absolutely thrilled to see that in five of seven areas, this is on the upswing. And when you think maybe these are not huge gains, when you think about moving 30,000 students up three percentage points, that is no small effort. So we're incredibly excited to see that the majority of these indicators are trending in the right direction and really optimistic and know that this takes a ton of effort by a lot of people. It's a real, uh, global effort to shore up the climate. It's a real global effort to shore up the climate of our students in our buildings, especially post-pandemic. So with that, that concludes not only our Goal Three presentation, but our strategic reporting for the year, and happy to take any questions.
Alrighty, so first of all, thank you, as you probably would hear from everybody else, all the efforts that go into this and collecting that data. I think just going back on that, you know, using it as a tool moving forward and communicating not only to our staff, to the teachers, but to the community so they understand the same picture that we're seeing, so there's no, there's transparency. So, you know, I'd like to see more of that as much as you can, but thank you for that information there. And going back to the volunteers and the vetting of everything, you know, I think that was a big takeaway to get 13,000, not just 1,300, volunteers vetted, ready to go wherever we need to plug them in, and then communicating it out more to the community, again, more so, so they understand that it could be a part of this process here for our community. So again, thank you for your hard work. It's what I want to tell you. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Phoenix. Appreciate that. I'd like to just say the same thing. Thanks to both of you for your leadership on really critical areas. And the leadership that you both exhibit really comes from your passion for students and for families. And to see the steps forward that we're making, engaging our families, that's a really good something. To see more volunteers coming in and supporting our students and working with teachers to support, to support our students, it really is just an incredible effort. And that leadership helps mobilize people. And so then our schools are able to work with our teachers, and it just continues to kind of multiply out. But a lot of that really comes from your leadership and your vision, not only this year, but throughout the years. Thank you for the, the great presentation, the compelling data, and really making it very actionable for, for educators that have such a large volume of items to attend to. And we really appreciate all those efforts to, to support all the people that you're supporting in our system. So thanks to you both.
Thank you. You did a great job. Did you want to respond to that?
I just, I forgot to mention, WEA and President Kalen Evans, they are a tremendous support to the Parent Teacher Home Visit Project, and it's really because of their leadership that that program continues to flourish. So forgive me, I forgot that, but wanted to mention that.
Oh, we always have time for appreciation. This was an incredible presentation. Thank you so much, Ms. Crane, Dr. Davidson, just really, really impressive and exciting to hear the insights, like next year, maybe it will be additional messaging around kindergarten families so that they understand the importance of their education even at five. So thank you so much. This was wonderfully done. And great way to finish the milestones of momentum for this year, definitely on a high note. Thank you. All right, that closes item 3.02, and we'll move on now to item 3.03, the presentation to provide a mid-year update on the Phone Away and Learn Today pilot for managing personal electronic devices in schools and classrooms in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation only, and we have with us, in his new title for the first time ever, our Chief Academic Officer for Elementary Education, Mr. Dog and Naughty, Area Superintendent Chris Hackbush, and again, our Director of Research and Evaluation, Dr. Laura Davidson.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. Again, Donna Ngotti, Chief Academic Officer of Elementary Education. Excited to have Area Superintendent Chris Hackbush, as well as Dr. Laura Davidson, Director of Research and Evaluation with us today to give you some updates on our Phone Away Learn Today campaign. Our goal today with our updates is to basically describe the implementation efforts for the Phone Away Learn Today pilot that we've embarked on. Our review is student and staff attitudes from the Fall Climate Survey about cellphones, review mid-year staff survey, student focus groups and behavior data, and describe next steps between April and August of where we're going to go next. So if I could get that next slide for me, JJ, or whoever has the remote. Thanks, Laura. All right, so just to kind of reset us a little bit here on our timeline, back in August, we had Academy with our principals. We asked for feedback from them as to what policies they currently had in place, how they were implementing cellphone policies, electronic device policies there. Through the fall, we went in and finalized our regulation. We got some perception data from student, staffs, and families. We also trained our principals and launched in November the, the ordering of our phone units for our, our schools to have a place where devices could be stored. And we also began that campaign with our communication staff, with Michelle's guidance on the toolbox and the toolkit that we needed our schools to be able to have, that we're going to be able to utilize with communication, with the rollout of the Phone Away Learn Today pilot, and also provided front office training to our staff. It was important that our people that are directly communicating with our families had that insight, and they were trained with that as well. We shifted a little forward into the spring where we did some surveys of staff, mid-year feedback. We recently had our student focus groups at our Student Voice Conference, so we received some more information from that, which Laura will hit on and Chris as well as we go through. And obviously, moving forward, we have our reflection and planning part, because in June, Academy to be able to update you with that. With the SEL lessons, again, the focus of those lessons, you can hit that for me, Laura, we provided feedback and, and resources for principals because it was important for them to be able to have lessons that, had socio-emotional learning lessons for our students to be able to understand how they're going to navigate the, the Phone Away pilot. How are we going to get, recoup some of that instructional time to be able to get the, get the bang for our buck in terms of instructional access, as well as understanding the need to put, to put our devices away and not be distracted and, you know, be able to utilize those, but also have some flexibility for teachers to be able to say, hey, we want to be able to use your device in this, in this instance for this lesson, for research prospects or not. So if you can go ahead and hit that next slide. So again, just a quick sample of what a SEL lesson might look like for an elementary student, and then also an elementary sample of what a high school lesson, but again, keeping in mind, how do we manage distractions, including phones and electronic devices, to increase that student learning and recoup those instructional minutes that we're striving to get back in the classroom? I'm going to turn it over now to Laura for some further information on the data.
Okay, thank you. So we took it to heart that we wanted to collect data all throughout. We learned from other districts that stakeholder input throughout this process is critical. You've got to design initiatives that staff and students and families are bought into. So we have already shared some of the data with you before the launch. That included family surveys and some other surveys. But right before the launch in October to December, we also added five questions on our student and staff climate surveys around cellphones. And I think what was really critical about that addition is that schools had access to the perception data of their students and their staff. So they knew when they were designing their policies and practices at their school that they knew exactly where students and staff were starting from in terms of attitudes. And then I think that data, we'll talk about in a minute, it's really interesting. I think it provides a lot of groundwork for us because I don't know if I've ever seen a data point in my career that has been more divergent between students and staff. I mean, the, they are on polar, polar opposite sides of the spectrum in terms of attitude, so hoping to see those close over time. Then, once we actually launched in January, we did quite a bit of additional stakeholder feedback. One of the most fun ones, I would say, is a set of focus groups that we did at the Student Voice Conference, and I actually did not do those focus groups. I trained three students from Galena High School on how to do a focus group, and they led the focus groups with peers in middle and high school. We did that in part because of that data that we got back saying that students and staff were on such opposite sides of the spectrum in terms of attitude. So we thought students would be much more honest with their peers than maybe they would be with adults, and they did an incredible job. I already told them I have jobs for them whenever they would like because they were very naturally gifted at doing focus groups, which are not easy. So then the next set of data that we collected at the exact same time, thanks to the help of WEA and Wispah, they helped us administer a survey to a sample of members, so 15 principals and 456 certified staff. And the intent of that feedback was to get some information about the strengths, challenges, and perceived impact so far. So just two months after we had launched, we wanted to make sure we were getting a pulse check from staff about how it was going. And then, of course, one of our main metrics throughout has been behavior data, so we'll have an update on that as well. So this is the survey data that we collected before the launch on the staff and student climate surveys, again, from a very large number of students and staff. And you can see that, yeah, as I've mentioned, we're on opposite sides of the spectrum here pre-launch. So for example, when we asked the question, "Cellphones can be a useful tool to help students learn," 93% of high school students agree or strongly agree, yes, of course it can be a useful tool. Compare that, especially in middle school, staff, only 44% of middle school staff think that cellphones can be useful for learning. I think it's interesting that students were very worried about teachers' ability to enforce this rule, perhaps more than teachers felt themselves. And 79% of our high school students agreed or strongly agreed that class time would be a big challenge as teachers were trying to enforce that rule. So we'll see who's right on that in a moment. But only 44% of our high school staff really worried about that. Just moving forward, the cellphones are a major distraction for students in the classroom. Only a third of our high school students thought that cellphones are a distraction, and so they're not terribly concerned about cellphones in classrooms compared to 90% of high school staff who said the same. So as you can see, we're, we have a lot of work to do, and that was our baseline data, but I think it'll be interesting to collect this data again next year and see if these rules have been in place for a longer period of time, or are we a little bit closer in terms of attitudes?
I appreciate that. So I'd love to get Nicole's voice in on this. My, the one that jumps out at me is that last one, "Cellphones have a negative impact on students' behavior at school," and only 31% of high schoolers at the time believed that, and whereas we've got 91% of high school staff. Nicole, jump in here. What, what do you see from your perspective? Or has this campaign and this process helped people maybe realize, like this is where it started? Now we're halfway through the second half of the year. Are perceptions changing? Like are students realizing that being away from their phone while they're supposed to be at school is good?
Um, I've seen, okay, I've seen a lot of change. I mean, going, going from like first semester to obviously like not enforcing it at all, and then second semester was like, it's a strong thing and we don't want to see them out. I've seen so much change, like, like, it's, I think it's an insane amount that I'm not really, I'm walking into classrooms and I'm seeing that there's like absolutely no phones out. I mean, because I'm an office aide, so obviously I go into classrooms and I'm going to give passes, and I see, I don't see any phones out at all, and I think it's great. So I think they are a big distraction, though, so they're a huge distraction, but other than that, I think it's great, so.
Thank goodness. I am so glad you're in that 31%, Nicole.
Okay, so we're still looking at perceptions going into our pilot, and so here, you're going to see what approaches schools had already been doing. And I think that's a real important point, that we, we weren't starting from ground zero with this work. So in the first section there, teacher discretion, some schools require phones locked, locked up, pouches, spas. We've kind of talked about those different techniques, or just keep them away, put them in your backpacks. This is most commonly seen in high school at the secondary level. Then you have all classrooms like cubbies or backpacks put away, or sometimes you don't even know if they have devices. That's more in elementary school, obviously. And then the middle schools are, are tight, and I'll speak to that here in a little bit. But here, not allowed at all in school. They don't want to be seen, sometimes maybe locked in lockers, so a much tighter policy. The student focus groups, they, they kind of expressed they did want some regulation. It's kind of interesting in the perceptions going into it. And, and again, it differs on the age of student, obviously, but there was an emphasis, and good points made out of these focus groups, like for instance, if we're asking them to use the laptops, we need to make sure those laptops are prepped, ready to go for if they're doing research or Canvas assignments and things like that. So working with staff and working with your tech person on staff to make sure those are happening. Generally positive, want some regulation. Students usually voice that. They want to see the rules. We, we heard that from Duran. You know, we want the rules enforced. I think that's good for culture and climate. But they want an opportunity to access phones as needed, all right? Like to maybe check or coordinate a ride after school or something like that, just a safety piece. And, and that's an important voice that was shared. Students were more negative toward policies that were absolute, right? So it's just, we're doing this to you approach, like a band, okay? Going into this work, it is clear that high schools were more loose. And, and I'm going to speak to that here in a little bit, of going from loose to tight policies with high school students who are really to a point where they want to be treated like adults. That's a challenge, especially mid-year, right? Putting a pilot policy in place mid-year. We need to build tighter teacher capacity. So if you remember, we had a PD day set for after the break. However, because of the fire, the Galena fires, we, we had to get that via instructional day. So we kind of lost that opportunity. Schools kind of had to fit that in on their own, right? So that was a barrier, a little bit of a shift there. So we really need to support teachers with best practices. And there's some really great practices. I mean, you have some examples like a simple red light, green light that the teacher clicks. Simple, you know, and you might think that's more so, the kids love that. They, they're like, that's simple. Okay, if it's on, I can use it. If it's red, I can't. Simple. And then support administrators with the accountability piece. And again, I'm going to focus more a little bit on the, on the high school end of things as a former high school principal. You have a huge staff, and I think the perceptions were very on point by the students when it earlier said they were worried about teachers enforcing it, right? Because it's like parenting, right? We all, we all struggle through that. And so that accountability could be a walkthrough form and including a tech check. And that's what Worcester does. Worcester's admin team is doing that. They're calibrated with it, and they're including it with their teacher clarity work and their EL look-for's. And so building capacity with our site leaders on that piece. Okay, so some insights on what we're seeing and some next steps with students. So elementary has been not really an issue at all. A lot of kids do not have devices. If they do, they're the watches, so that's something we'll have to look at through the semester ends and kind of see if we need to add anything with that. However, this is a great opportunity at the elementary level to onboard parents on the topic, maybe perhaps before they've gotten a device or decided to give a device to their student, right? And then also teach responsibility with our students, okay? So then you look at the onboarding of a strong start to middle school. They're inheriting a very strict policy at all of our middle schools. And some are a lot tighter than others, but across the board, very tight in our middle schools before we even implemented this system, or this pilot, rather. And so that's really important to maybe calibrate our principals and maybe some of the free time sessions or where we're, we're storing the phones. And then it's a great opportunity for the high schools, okay? And we've talked, we talked to the high school principals today in our professional learning today about this very topic. And so you have ninth graders currently, and who will be 10th graders next year, and incoming ninth graders, who are accustomed to a very strict policy. That's a great opportunity. So when they onboard to the high school level, we need to keep it tight. We need to keep it tight, so it's an opportunity there. This is going to take some teacher training, best practices on how to manage this in the classroom, and it's going to take some support and collaboration among principals to hold that accountability piece as, as a walkthrough and get in classrooms more to be able to see this because it's a high impact at the ninth, 10th grade level, all right? Now, there's some opportunities maybe to differentiate as they become juniors and seniors. And again, that's knowing your kids, building relationships, and release of some control there a little bit. So I think we, we have some options there, too. A lot of heavy, heavy working with staff on these, on these topics.
Okay, so in addition to the student focus groups that we did in March at the exact same time, we also administered a staff survey to certified staff and principals. And I think that data very much mirrors what we saw at the baseline before the launch, but as you could see in the baseline data from the fall, staff were very much ready for this change, and that really came out in our March data as well. So 87% of staff who said that there was an impact as a result of the launch in January were positive about it. They said that they liked it or they very much liked it. So I think that's an incredibly high number. Staff were very supportive of this change. That said, I think maybe the students were a little bit right in worrying about the enforcement of it. When we look at those two bar graphs down below and ask the question, "How easy are When we look at those two bar graphs down below and ask the question, "How easy or difficult has it been for students to follow the cellphone rules at your school?" 42% of staff said that it was easier, very easy, meaning the majority said that it was not. When we asked, "How easy or difficult is it for you to enforce your school's new cellphone practice?" That one was higher, about almost 57% of our staff said that it is easier, very easy. But I think as we get used to these rules and get used to enforcing them, and it's such a shock to the system right now for so many students, that these will improve over time, but certainly adding a little bit of effort for our schools to have to enforce some of these new rules that they're learning about. We also asked about the impact since January among our staff, went through a series of questions. So as you can see there, we first asked about student cellphone use during instructional time and whether that had decreased. I think one thing to point out on all of these charts is on the far left there, we had a "not applicable" option. I think the majority of those, which staff talked about in some of the open-ended feedback, is they didn't notice an impact because some of these policies started at the beginning of the school year, or they started two years ago. So when they're selecting "not applicable," they are saying, "Well, nothing really changed in January, but man, you should have seen us in August when we implemented." So I think that's the majority of what that data is there. But across the board, we are seeing it do what we wanted it to. We see about 64% of our staff saying that it did reduce cellphone use during instructional time. That was the whole point of this process. And then on the next four sets of questions, we see that it had all kinds of positive impacts that we were hoping for, including students learning more, being more on task, less distracted, interacting more. The bottom two there, I think the main explanation for why those are a little bit lower is I don't think behaviors and cyberbullying happen so much in the classroom where the restrictions are. They're happening after school, at lunch. So that's my best guess for why, especially the "not applicable" comes up a little bit more there. But in general, the majority was positive, and I think probably would have been so even more had we phrased it when you instituted your policy a year ago, two years ago, or at the start of the school year. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Chris, who's going to talk about some of the open-ended feedback that we got from that survey.
Yeah, so the Phones Away Learn Today campaign, just the impact. So very, you know, more positives about the impact of the campaign on learning. You know, it's interesting, you'll hear students say, "You know, I want to be present." You know, it's funny, I had a conversation with my son who just went off to college, and I promised him for his 19th birthday I'd give him a tattoo. And so I was a little worried, yeah, I was a-
So you would give it to him?
No, no, I didn't know that. No, you don't want to see that, yeah.
Because I would be there for Thanksgiving if that's going to happen.
Yeah, that would have been instant, yeah. Hilarious. But I would tell you, you get nervous. You're like, "Okay, I've made this promise, right? And so what's it going to be?" Right? And so it's a symbol to be present. And he kind of talked about that. And then, you know, I tried to get ahold of him the other day, and he's like, "Yeah, I just didn't have my phone that day. I kind of just left it in the dorm." You know, so it's something at the forefront of students. And I always talk to staff about, people want the adults to be the adults sometimes, you know? And I think us making a stand shows a good movement toward that, okay? And, you know, I've had staff run up to me in the gym and go, "Thank you, you know, for taking this stand and it's making an impact, and it's so much easier with colleagues and things like that." If we go to the next slide, the challenges. And I will tell you, taking this on mid-year was going to be a challenge. We know that, right? Because the rule of thumb is you got to start, have a strong start, be clear at the beginning, you know, and then you can maybe release control. Well, we're going tight right from the semester, so, and we have three different levels we're dealing with. So I think the learnings that we can look at are enhanced systems and structures, and I will, I'm going to hone in on the high school level, because again, we went loose to tight policies. So you're going to see how the discipline relates to that. Again, using practices like a walkthrough form, that administrators can have a tech check. I think that's something we can implement, because at this time of year, emphasis on certain things can fall off. We know that, right? As soon as springs break, it's human nature. So we need to be proactive and know that about ourselves, both as adults and as students, and be ahead of that. Teacher PD is going to be an emphasis so that we can share best practices, because we have some exemplary examples of how strong classroom managers are able to do this seamlessly, okay? And then a concerted district communications effort with cleared timelines, get ahead of some things on the calendar, and keep the momentum. I think that's important. And it's a huge statement. Again, I've mentioned this before, we are doing it one of the first times of a district-wide positive behavior initiative across every school in the organization. And that's a lofty goal, and we're getting there. Okay, so keep the momentum of messaging from schools, teachers, and the entire district. Alignment there. Develop strong, simple strategies for our teachers. So it's going to take a lot of collaboration in terms of supports. Alignment, keep an eye on the behavior matrix, so we're making sure that behavior is being handled consistently across our schools. And I will share good news, and that is, as an area superintendent, we get the calls when parents and families are upset about some of the rules or the implementation of rules at our sites. And it's been quiet. I'll just tell you that. So that tells me our schools are doing a great job, okay? Yeah, I knocked on wood, I do. All right. Okay. Okay, and then let's talk about the discipline. And again, so we have done the groundwork, and I think the data is going to speak to us a lot more accurately for next year. So this is a little messy data, I would say, but it tells us that we're seeing that schools are enforcing, okay? And they are entering that data into our infinite campus system. So, you know, we're going to have to tighten up and decide, are we going to record every minor electronic device infraction, or how are schools going to manage it? But in terms of any majors, you know, we can talk about that and see that it is being addressed and enforced. And then focusing some intentionality, how we're recording our discipline across our schools next year. So again, some training for our assistant principals, maybe our deans, who are entering that data. And supporting high schools with that loose-tight, "Let's go tighter with the freshmen and sophomores." Let's really onboard our incoming students to high school with this, because they are conditioned. You know, and that's something, as a high school principal, I didn't really realize until I talked to my counterpart at the middle school, and I was like, "Oh, this is an opportunity to maybe tighten things up at the start when we have all our induction, you know, onboarding celebrations and welcoming our incoming students to our schools in that way." And I think there's a good point on that from elementary onboarding communication to the middle school and vice versa to the high school.
I think Vice President Mayberry has a question.
Could you, thank you, Madam President. Could you give us just an example of what a major technology violation is, you know, something of substance?
It was, it's probably around the realm of defiance, I would say. So if you think of-
Okay, yeah. I'm not turning my cellphone off, or I'm not giving it up, okay?
Yeah, it's beyond what the teacher is handling. Think of minors as teacher-level discipline, you know? There are minors that like the dean or administrator might handle. However, major is going to be definitely something recorded in infinite campus with significant, like a consequence, most likely. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so taking a quick look at our April to June next steps, and Chris hit on a lot of these already. Work with parent university to support families around responsible technology, again, at the elementary level, really making sure our families understand the purpose of what we're doing here. Working with MTSS department for our SEL lessons and continuing to get our teachers to incorporate those in the classrooms. Looking at our progressive discipline, restorative practices, and de-escalation strategies when those incidences occur. And onboarding new staff and long-term subs, substitutes as they come into our schools as well. High school guidance around the differentiated policies for ninth and 10th, because middle school's really tight right now. High school a little bit looser, but really emphasizing that differentiated opportunity for our ninth and 10th graders coming in. And then all of our schools using the walkthrough tool to monitor and see what's taking place in our schools with that. And then our last piece here, basically our June board presentation with you, there is AB 444 that's out there now in terms of reviewing the alignment of that, AB 444 and the language with that and how that applies to our regulation. So once that's finalized, taking a look at our regulation and seeing what we may need to add to that around that. Data update, we'll survey our principals again in May to understand the plan. We'll provide the classroom monitoring approaches, look at some year-end behavior data as well, and bring that to you again in June. And also our finalized plan for a full launch, a full launch program, being able to update the regulation if needed and have all of our information there for you as well. And at this point, we're available to answer any questions for you.
Good. Okay. Thank you all so much for this. This is great information. One thing that really stuck out to me, and I've experienced this personally, is the technology available to teachers in their classrooms. I noticed one of the comments said it takes 10 minutes for our laptops to turn on. That is a huge amount of time in a classroom, say if you only have 45 or 50 minutes with a middle school group of students. 10 minutes turns into actually 20, because you also then have to wrangle them back, right? So what work are we doing to ensure that our classrooms have technology that boots up and isn't causing teachers to want to use the phone instead?
Well, I think again, and I mentioned it earlier, I think as administrative teams work with their teacher's support, I think that goes into the teacher support realm of this, because we need to make sure our devices are up and running. So we run into this with testing sometimes, like I know testing science, for instance, at the high school level. If the computers aren't turned on, you know, prior to the test or testing day, we have major issues. So a lot of it is prep. It's the prep of the lesson, right? If you know you're going to be using the laptop carts afforded to each classroom in your building, let's make sure those are updated. They, you know, you go to the department, IT department if you need assistance, but those are things you just can't haphazardly do. You got to really be ahead of that. And that's admin teams and principals working with their staff to ensure that. And I've talked to principals, and that's, that was when I had focus groups at Reno High, that was something students would say a lot. But I've talked to principals, and their devices are working just fine, you know? You know, I've talked to Darrell Bell at Del Monte, he's like, "My laptops work great." You know, so that, sometimes that's a default excuse.
And Trustee Hall, if I can add on, too. We do have a refresh that we go through with IT, so there's a refresh program. It's on a percentage based on enrollment, so we are refreshing. We're also encouraging e-wasting of the devices that may be older in time to eliminate some of those. But I would say that the percentage there, so that possibility could exist, but we do have a refresh program in place.
Awesome. And I know Mr. Rangotti is very familiar with that, because he used to run a one-to-one school. So yes, nice job. Thank you.
Excuse me. But I will say this, and I appreciate your comments about the high school being a little more lax. I have daughters, you know, children in high school, and I still get text messages from them during the day, and I respond to them, "So what are you doing? Why are you using your phone?" And, you know, of course, radio silence after that. But I do think you really crystallized something, and we talked about whether it's this generational, you know, the middle school's much tighter going forward, it's going to be a lot easier for those students to adapt to a lot of these new rules. I think that makes a lot of sense, because even with, you know, the policy we have in place now, there's still some looseness, at least, you know, from a dad's perspective. But, you know, it sounds like we're making great progress. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam President. I know I mentioned this before, but I just, I have to reiterate it. I'm so impressed that so much work has been done in such a short period of time. Because I know when us as a board heard, "Oh, it'll take a year, or a whole school year, or the next year," and we all emphatically said, "No, we need it by December," you know? And the fact that you guys took such an elaborate and comprehensive approach, I mean, it wasn't a, "Hey, here's the rules, go forth." You know, it was, you guys took so many different steps, so many different approaches, so much involvement with the community, with the students, with the teachers, with parents, with the unions. I mean, geez, everyone was involved. So I really, really do appreciate it. And the only thing I can comment I want to make, which is so funny to me, is that I heard so many people complain about, "You guys need to take away the phones." And then when this was all created, crickets. I haven't heard any, I thought I was going to get a bunch of thank-yous. I thought we were going to get, you know, all this praise. Yeah, there's nothing, you know? But it's obvious that there is change and there's an impact, and we're seeing it. And this is just the beginning. So I just want to express our gratitude. Thank you very much.
And the thank-yous can be sent to board members at washoschools.net.
I'll conclude. Thank you very much. It's been thoughtful implementation around important work, and when we increase students being engaged in their academic experience, those academic outcomes are going to improve. And it's been really done with our schools, with our students, and tremendous progress has been made. And just want to say thanks to each of you for your outstanding leadership in taking this forward. Nice job.
All right, team, that closes item 3.03. And we're going to go ahead and just get through item 3.04. I think this is going to be an efficient item for us, and then we will go ahead and take a nice break before we get to item 3.05. So we will open now for item 3.04. This is the presentation and discussion to update the Board of Trustees on the 2025 Nevada Legislative Session Based on the Priorities of the Approved 2025 Washoe County School District Legislative Platform, including creating space for students to thrive, empowering our personnel, supporting our local community, and advocating for smart strategic funding, as well as updates to the Washoe County School District's Legislation Assembly Bill 49. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and as I look up, I see Principal Up, Pinion Public Affairs, Dylan Shaver.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Members of the Board, Dylan Shaver with Pinion Public Affairs. And I know you've had a lot of meat already today, so we're going to try and move as quickly as possible through today's agenda. I try and bring you the same rough outline when we show up, so that I can just jump right in. You passed a platform after considerable effort before the legislative session even started, and I like to frame our legislative conversations around that platform. That platform specifically calls out your excellence in every higher act, which passed from the Assembly Committee on Education unanimously. It does a couple of things, as you know, aimed at clearing roadblocks to people who want to be educational personnel, whether that is a classroom teacher or a school social worker. It took a lot of effort to get the bill where it was. I want to say a special thanks to Doug Owen. It is now in the Assembly Committee on Ways and Means, because it does have a fiscal note. You remember that we are asking the department to waive a certain portion of the application fees for new teachers. That inherently pulls money out of the state, so it's going to require further consideration. Ultimately, it seems like pulling that out if we have to is on the table, but that's the reason for that being in Ways and Means. Also in Ways and Means is, as we skip down the list to reclaim lost instructional time, is Assembly Bill 386, a bill sponsored by Assembly Member Heather Golding in collaborating with the WCSD team. That bill was actually fated to disappear after the last House deadline. The challenge we had with that, and this is the bill essentially, to make our class time more efficient and ensure that we don't have to do sort of assessments with both MAP and I Ready. The state has switched vendors to our provider, and so the legislators sort of looked at that as, "Well, problem solved, right? We don't need the bill." And then the day before the bill deadline, I was with Superintendent Ernst and 16 other superintendents, who were very frustrated with the way the move was rolling out and being able to train their staff in a timely fashion and all of that. And so what we did, I called the superintendent that next morning, I said, "Hey, what if we keep this bill alive just as an option in case something happens as they make this transition? Just to have the vehicle running and ready to go in case we need to make a quick getaway, as it were?" And so we- And so we made a lap with the committee and we were able to move that on the deadline day, having sort of previously thought it would just sort of go away as our problem had been solved. We're going to work with the other school districts and with the legislators and NDE as that plays out. There are two other bills to eliminate unnecessary reporting that our personnel have to do. Those are Senate Bill 81 and Assembly Bill 389. Our staff has provided a lot of really valuable feedback on those as well, and I think they'll both move to passage. Moving right along, creating space for students to thrive. I can't get away with not saying this, so I'm just going to be plain about it. The Washoe County School District does not oppose anybody playing lacrosse or even the sanctioning of lacrosse as a sport. The rules of the legislature require you to show up with a position on a bill. And if your position is anything other than we like this as drafted, you are not in support of the bill. It used to be when I was a baby lobbyist, you could go up neutral with concerns, and here are my seven amendments, under the rules that is no longer allowed. So of course, we are committed to making sure that there is a process by which NAA is sanctioning sports. We've been working with the sponsor of that bill to make sure that that is what the bill does and these families and kids have an outlet for this sport they love. I would just hate for the district's position on the matter to be mischaracterized. So that's in Senate Bill 305. Last version of that we saw might still require some work, but we're getting there. There were, speaking of creating space for students to thrive, there are a couple of bills to sort of protect school libraries from outside politics. We're paying very close attention to those to make sure that the district's needs are still met and we're able to respond to our families when they do have real concerns. Moving forward to empowering your personnel, I want to shout out Dr. Lamarcus, who has now left. But he's been a tremendous resource on Senate Bill 174, which addresses district-level policies, allowing RBTs and VCBAs, these are behavioral health assistance into classrooms. He's been a tremendous resource, not just for us, but really for the sponsors of the bill to really understand how these things play out. And then specifically for us on Senate Bill 177, which did roll back some of the behavioral ground we had gained in 2023 in working with the sponsors of that measure. We were able to get our concerns across and they were very helpful in mitigating our concerns. Wouldn't have been able to pull that off without Dr. Lamarcus. Supporting our community, here I'll touch briefly on AB 156. This drills right into your platform plank, sort of saying that it should really be up to communities to decide whether and how trustees are compensated. As introduced, that bill provided that privilege to one county. It now provides it to all 17. It still requires some work and we're going to keep working on it through the remaining 50 or so days of the legislature. This, I'd like to take a minute to talk about AB 3162, especially as it relates to representative Batavia. This is the bill on having a student trustee on the school board that Assembly Member Nguyen essentially pointed at what you are doing here in Washoe County, saying, that's what I want to replicate, that's what I want to do. He took a lot of feedback from us on that bill, and I do owe him a thank you for taking our feedback to how to craft a law that would align with what WCSD did. The bill nevertheless failed, but still I want to acknowledge the work he put into making sure that students were represented and that it did so in a way that preserved what WCSD is already doing so well. Lastly, of course, we advocate for smart and strategic funding. As I run out of breath here, I want to call out Mark Mathers on AB 398. This is Speaker Jaeger's bill. It's been in the newspaper to create a special fund to provide incentive pay for hard-to-fill educational positions. We, there are provisions in that bill that would have essentially said you can only use the money in these funds for filling those positions, precluding us from using Zoom and Victory Funds for incentive programs to get teachers into those positions. Mark flagged that right away. We had some conversations with the speaker. He was very receptive. That bill itself is going to be pretty budget-dependent, but I think if it moves forward, it'll move forward with our recommendations included in the measure. Talked about funding a couple of times, and I'll touch on that more in a minute. Today, and part of the reason I'm talking so quickly here today, is the first House passage deadline. We want to make sure we're communicating with you as frequently as possible. But I am in three places at once right now. You're actually seeing a mirage of me that's being projected from Assembly Members' offices. But that will take them into the, hopefully, knock on wood, early evening tonight. And that'll really give us a sense of the state of play as we move into the last third of the legislative session. Today's deadline is overshadowed by the May 1st Economic Forum report. For those of you who are new to the process, we rely on a Council of Learned Elders to project the future as to how much money the legislature and governor have to spend at this legislative session. They will make their final projection on May 1st. We do not anticipate a rosy number from the forum, but anything that I would tell you right now is just guesswork. I am not one of the learned elders who gets to make this prediction. Collections in a lot of areas are over the place. Sales tax is flat. Frankly, I believe the fact that sales tax is flat is an outlier. I think that that is probably an artificial figure that we're dealing with there. That will dictate how the rest of session goes. Of course, a lot of that is heavily dependent on federal funding. This state relies on $16 billion in Medicaid funding alone. $16 billion, double the size of the state's general fund. And so a hiccup in that process could have devastating effects as the legislature continues to sort of put together the budget. They are closing budgets right now. I would recommend nobody get too attached to those budget closures at this time. So that does have the potential to really suck up all of the attention folks are paying to any other issue in Carson City. So we are hyper-focused on that deadline. And I am sure if you do not hear it from me, Mr. Mathers will be telling you what the real effects will be on our budget shortly thereafter. As it relates to new and tracked bills, when I gave you your session preview, I previewed the Senate Majority Leader's Educate Act and Governor Lombardo's education reform package. I could tell you about those bills now, and it would still be a preview as neither one has been introduced at this time. Both have solicited feedback from the district from various ideas. Remember, our job is to be a neutral ballplayer, serving as a resource for whoever would like our expertise. We have and will continue to do so. And when those bills are out, we'll be able to speak more intelligently about them. I don't know who is writing them, but hopefully they are writing even faster than I am talking right now. All right. I've made it all the way through my notes. I tried to keep it brief for you. Like I said, I gave a long thing. Happy to answer any questions. I do want to take an opportunity to shout out Tess Opferman. If you guys are reading your weekly updates, I simply could not do those without her and the team that works under her, that's Davida Tyson and Madison Proctor, who do great work standing on top of those things, putting those updates together and getting them out the door to y'all every week. And as always, of course, the superintendent and his team. I named and dropped a couple of people here, but in speaking so fast, I certainly didn't get to everybody. So just please know if you're listening to this, we really appreciate the energy folks are doing to help us be successful in Carson City.
Thank you so much. I have, I just have one question on a bill because it's kind of close to my heart. It's AB 48, and this is the Clark County bill involving bullying. And what I thought was interesting about that is that this would allow a school district to move a student who was found to be a bully or perpetrator of discrimination based on race, bullying, or cyberbullying, if the parent or guardian requests the move. And so just a question on that, because bullying is something that's really serious. And I'm often struck at the number of times that a victim moves schools as opposed to the bully. So what I wanted to ask is, does this bill mean that the bully can only move if the parent or guardian requests it? Because I'm kind of of the opinion that the school district should be able to move a student. So I just wanted to ask, and you don't, you know, if you don't know that off the top of your head, that's perfectly fine. But I just wanted to bring that one up to see what you knew about it.
As a bit of a time saver, I didn't bring my laptop up here. I will happily send you through the superintendent an update on that bill. I do not believe it would leave that just to the parents, but without my notes in front of me, I couldn't tell you for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. AB 48. Yes, I just want to take the opportunity to express my gratitude to Mr. Shaver and to our superintendent. Because at our last meeting, I got the honor of being designated as this legislative representative for the board. And immediately, I would say, the very next day, we had a 7:30 in the morning meeting. And I appreciated that very, very much. Dylan wanted to get in some conversations with me as soon as possible, and so did Mr. Ernst, and I appreciate that. And our conversation really was related to the fact that us as board members, we are out in the community and we have relationships with other electeds and parents and even students. And that we just all want to know, have the ability to communicate through me if there is a situation where there's a bill that may in fact impact any of those relationships or individuals that we deal with, to make sure that our voice came across as a group as a whole. So I really appreciate that, that you took that time, Dylan, and also how quick and available you've been via text message or phone call if I had any questions. I really do appreciate that, and I just wanted to express that gratitude. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other lights on. Thank you so much. You did great for an AI hologram. Thank you so much, Mr. Shaver. All right, that closes item 3.04. We'll go ahead and take a recess now. We'll take a good, solid 15 minutes and come back somewhere around the 4:40 PM time. Thank you.
All right, everyone. It is 4:46 PM on this Tuesday, April 22, 2025. And I will call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. So just before this break, we closed item 3.04 and we open now with item 3.05. Approval of the recommendation of the zoning advisory committee to modify the enrollment boundaries of the following schools as a result of the construction of a new Otis E. Otis Vaughn Middle School effective beginning the 2026-27 school year. Smithridge Elementary School, Huffaker Elementary School, Edwin Dodson Elementary School, Donner Springs Elementary School, Hidden Valley Elementary School, E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, Darrell C. Swope Middle School, Edward L. Pine Middle School, Marcy Hurst Middle School, Kendall DePoli Middle School, Galena High School, Reno High School, Earl Wooster High School, and Damani Ranch High School. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us today first, a volunteer who has given countless hours and months and years on the zoning advisory committee and its current chair, Tyler Rogers. And then also our chief facilities management officer, Tammy Zimmerman. Thank you so much for being here and bringing us through the recommendation.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to bring this to you for possible approval tonight. Want to start with the overview of why we're here today. This is, we started with the temporary closure of the Pine Middle School, right? That's on that campus to rebuild it as an elementary school that was approved through the facility modernization and the pre-K study. Then we started some community meetings, right? Public meetings, January, February, and April with the zoning advisory committee. So, and then through that, we provided nine different options. So a lot of little brain tumbling through that, a lot of dense information to digest. And this is intended for the enactment of the school year 26-27 for these zones. So along with just the public meetings, really wanted to highlight that we had a community meeting held by Delisa Crane with our family school partnership at Pine to educate that community and other communities on how they could participate in these public meetings, what school of choice meant, how to put a public comment card in, and how we could work through the translation for them to hear their voices. So thought that was really important and really exciting to see a real big turnout there at that. I'll let Tyler talk about his zoning advisory chair community engagement that he had with those specific communities out there.
Good evening, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and the board, Tyler Rogers for the record. I've been on the zoning advisory committee for, I guess this is the third year, and this has certainly been the largest or sort of most complex zoning decision to tackle. And as we approached it, I've always found that the role of ZAC sits in between the district and the community, and a fundamental aspect of that is listening. And so I think it's always been critical for the ZAC to invest time with the community to listen and understand their concerns and represent that. And so ZAC has always prided itself, I think, of going to the community with the help of the district. Two of our meetings of the three that we've had on this topic were in the community, both at Vaughn and Pine. Personally, I've invested time to meet principals, meet with the PTAs of impacted communities. I had the good fortune to ride the bus. I'm going to talk a little bit about the importance of transportation in this process. And so district staff was kind of enough to facilitate a bus ride from Damani into the Smithridge community, just to understand at the invite of students that are here tonight. And I think the other thing that really stood out for me of this listening is we last Thursday had a four-plus hour meeting, two and a half hours of public comment. And that public comment was like, who's been to the morning glow show at the Reno balloon races? What does that have to do with zoning? There we go. See? The tradition is a dueling banjo experience early in the morning. And honestly, that's what it felt like in some ways, because it was two schools, Damani and Wooster, having their students come and brag about how amazing their schools are. And it was like a dueling banjo situation. It was warm and it was refreshing. And I think like, anyone that is skeptical of this school district should spend some time listening to that, because the student voices were so refreshing. And even if it was a late night, it was so welcoming, including your student representative was there speaking on behalf of Wooster. And so there's been a lot of listening, which will surface sort of what that was when we get further into the presentation.
I got to ride the bus too, just so you. It was, it was, it was air conditioned and it was a great ride. So we also brought many departments to this meeting so that people could understand how it affected other items. School of choice, a lot of people needed some of that elementary education to understand what school of choice meant and how it worked. The NIAA with athletic eligibility, how does rezoning affect them? So we had that department come and speak and explain how it would potentially function for those students. We had area superintendent Melinda Baker talked about elective opportunities, because there was a concern that maybe some schools might be losing electives and how that would balance out. Turned out that they were very well balanced in electives and opportunities and very well aligned with each other in what they offered, that they were almost identical. So that was really refreshing to hear. And then we talked about some multi-tiered systems of supports for behaviors and how staff is trained and how they go about dealing with that at schools and the different tiers and what supports that they can get. So really gave them a gamut of what we as a district can wrap our arms around, all of those students and provide those supports. So we had several options. We had nine. I've listed them here. I'm not going to read them all for you, because they're pretty lengthy. But we did do some dense, deep dives into those areas, and you guys have all those in your packets. But I wanted to ground you guys also in the guidance. These are guidance, these are guiding principles that we talked to the zoning advisory about and that they should be thinking about when they're doing this work. But again, it is guidance, and those are all in there. And we had refreshed that multiple times throughout meetings with them. So then here at the end of our last meeting, we came up with, the zoning advisory came up with a recommendation for 4A. I'll let Tyler speak to a little bit about 4A and what it means throughout that. We can talk about current and then the option, and then we also have our brush fryer charts that show you what those student enrollments projections would be.
Great. So let me walk you through sort of the current and where we landed. I'm going to do it in the form of these maps. So on the left-hand side are the current boundaries. And if you're new to these, these maps, the pink lines represent the middle school, the dark black represents the high school, and the thin white lines are the elementary schools. So let me sort of walk around the image in terms of what we learned. I think what's represented off on these impacted communities are a lot of eastern Reno and southern Reno. And if you look at historically, south Reno has seen a massive amount of growth, and that means that these communities have been rezoned a lot. And so as we go through this process, we heard, we heard about that experience. And they have, these communities are unfortunately familiar with that, and it is a byproduct of growth, but is a really important element for us to consider too. So a few things that we learned, I think, about the communities, and I'm going to start sort of on the right-hand side. I think they're, starting with, I think, the Smithridge community, which is that sort of the black line that jumps up from McCarran. They have historically flowed south over the past 20 years, both into Galena and Damani. And I think over this course of listening, we heard really key priorities from each community, and you may hear more of it tonight in public comment. But I think the thing that was the most resounding from that community was their connection into south Reno and specifically into Damani Ranch. Throughout the course of public comment, throughout the course of talking to the PTA, flowing into that community was extremely valuable to them. And they could only do that because of transportation, which is, I think, another key aspect of what we've learned through this process, especially for that community. That's why I rode the bus. There are over, I think, five to 10 buses that go from that community into south Reno, both to take the students that are there. If they don't have those buses, they couldn't get to that community. They, in school, sort of the nuances of school of choice too. So I think that was the key thing that we learned from them. In the center of some sort of central Reno community, I think we heard that the pride of Wooster and the desire for a continued investment into the core of Reno. And so much of our development happens outside of the core. And so there's a big discussion of what is the future of Wooster? What does a growing Vaughn mean? What does the regrowth, what is the fact that Wooster's on the FMP mean for that community? And so that factored into our thinking as well. Another key aspect, as we look on the sort of the right-hand side of this map, is the future of Dodson and Smithridge. And we know, and directionally, what we heard from staff, as well as sort of the intent of the board, is that those schools could get consolidated into a new elementary school at Smithridge. And so that was part of our calculus too, is how do we design a line now, forward thinking, so that that site could be influenced and impacted now as opposed to having to rezone it in the future? So that factored in, I'll sort of summarize that here in a second. We heard the rest of sort of eastern Reno, Hidden Valley, and Dodson have historically flowed into Wooster. And so that factored into our thinking as well as sort of where, where to draw the lines. On the western side, so talking to the Huffaker community, I think, again, this is a community especially that has been impacted by rezoning historically. And they flowed both north and south. I think we heard, the biggest priority that we heard from that community, based on some early options bringing, bringing from staff, was a desire to sort of stay in the western part of Reno and to not flow into Vaughn and Wooster. And that we've sort of understood as a key priority of that community. I think in the last public meeting we had, there was a very useful report that the secretary of the Huffaker PPA brought to us. It was a poll of Huffaker community. Half of them wanted to go into Reno Swope, half wanted them want to go into Hurst and Galena. And so I think it's, it was tricky to decipher exactly that the desire of that community beyond the fact of not going into Vaughn and Wooster. And I think that factored into sort of some of our decisions that were on 4A. So to summarize, I think, all of that information, where ZAC landed, and it was, it was a split vote, five to four. And I'll try to represent some of the dissent as well. And then Vice President Coley is also here to speak to that as well, if we need to. So where we landed is on the right-hand side here, 4A. So I'll start on the right-hand side again. We landed on a situation of a split feeder for this Smithridge community. All of them feeding into Vaughn, but creating a situation that they continue to flow into Damani Ranch, which was so important to them. And I think what ZAC felt as a sort of a landing point for there was, one, it sends students into a new and exciting Vaughn and reinvests and continues to invest in the core of Reno while also giving these folks a pathway to programs that they love. We heard a ton and a ton about PAC at Damani Ranch and the power of that program through a lot of comment. And then the rest of it, sort of if you look at that pink line, continues to feed what was going into Vaughn, or was going into Pine, excuse me, into Vaughn for, for eastern parts of that part of Reno. And then on the left-hand side, so with Huffaker, where ZAC landed was a situation of connecting that community into, continue to flow it into south Reno. So putting all of historic Huffaker into Hurst and Galena. And I think another element that was sort of, we looked at as well is school of choice, is that the schools that are in eastern or western Reno, with maybe the exception of Swope, which is closed, especially Reno High, does have some, some room, especially in this model, which could give those families access to that school. I think that the last thing I'll represent is this question of sort of the split in ZAC between five and four. I think I can represent that through the, through the discussion and the deliberation, there seemed to be a general unanimous consent around ZAC of four, which is to continue to allow the Smithridge community to flow south into Damani. Where the difference on ZAC came up was around sort of the future of fleetinging into DePoli. And really a debate between four and 4A. And a key piece of that was, what is the consolidation of Dodson and Smithridge? And is Donner Springs in play there? I think there was some desire for optionality. Another element I didn't hit on is this Talis community that is also being built in south Reno, which we factored in as sort of to give our space, ourselves some space at DePoli, because the Talis community is a very clear development that is coming. And so ZAC felt like giving us some bandwidth there was another, another aspect. So I've covered a lot, but I think the point is, is that this was a complex puzzle. I'm sorry, the last bit is around transportation to Wooster that now I'm just remembering, is there was a big concern as well from the Smithridge community. If they were to flow into Wooster, they would be in the walk zone of Wooster, which means that that community would need to be walking into Wooster unless the board made an exception to provide bus. And that was a key, another key aspect of a desire for that community and a concern. We informed the community that like, the board can make an exception, that is, that is within the realm of possibilities, but ultimately we sort of solved that problem by not sending them into Wooster. So again, sorry, forget that, but the point is, is that there are a lot of different pieces of the puzzle to solve here. And so we landed on this as a way to, I sincerely say that I feel like every community got something from this process, but no one got everything. And I think that's probably just a reality of some of these, these processes, but that's where we landed. Happy to take some questions.
So before we do that, I'd like to talk about, you know, over the course of the last week and after zoning, and then this weekend, we did provide additional options for the Huffaker portion to you guys. It's in your packet. I mean, I can go over those really quickly. Huffaker, Hurst, to Galena is the option that is in option one that we had and is in this option that you see here. And then we offered a split at the Windy Hill area, kind of horizontally across to I-580. Then we offered another split that was the historic middle school boundary, so you guys could see what that is. And there is historic information in your, your attachments as well, so you can see that. Then we also offered a historic high school boundary, which was Lakeside up to Moana, and then east and west of that. And then the Huffaker split at McCarran was, was one of those geographic places that it was an idea to cut it off at. So we did provide those to you guys. Hope you guys enjoyed the heavy reading for that. And then if you have questions, we're happy to answer them.
We did, and thank you so much for that. Just to make sure that we're all orienting around the same things, because we've received quite a bit of public comment. At the ZAC last week, the only two options that were presented for Huffaker were either entirely Hurst to Galena or the option five, which was the split at McCarran. So just for our colleagues to know, that was, let's see, the split at McCarran is, is option H5. So just so that everybody's kind of following along with that, those were the only two options that were there last week. And thank you so much for doing that. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, President Smith. This, I cannot believe how much work you guys did. I mean, literally, I was going through this several times, and my eyeballs were rolling in my head. So forgive me if I'm wrong here, but I thought somewhere, and I know you said you were going to talk about buses or something, but somewhere, which school would have a possibility of a 40-minute bus ride? Was that Huffaker out to Galena a possibility of a 40-minute bus ride? Okay, I just, I gotta say, that's way too much. I'm just, I thought, that is just, I mean, for kids, that is, that's crazy. And then I started thinking about it this morning. That is the same as driving to Disneyland from here every week. No, seriously, it, it's pretty darn close. Every week going to Disneyland almost, I mean, that's just, I think they, they're going to be worn out before they even get in the classroom. I mean, it's just, it's a lot for littles to, you know, well, I just, I think. Well, our middle school, middle schoolers are tired before they even get in school because they're growing, you know? I just think it's just a lot on, on kids to do that. I don't know. That's me. I, I couldn't stand it. My, sitting there for 40 minutes every morning, 40 minutes every afternoon, I'd be pulling my hair out. That's just my opinion.
So I know that at the meeting last week, you guys made it clear about communities and about how like, Damani didn't want them to separate like their communities. So like, if you went to middle school with them, you would, you would want to go to high school with them. I know that for the option 4A, it shows that they're going to Vaughn, and then they're going right back down to Damani. And I know for Vaughn, most of them all go to Wooster. So I know that that was like a huge concern.
And, and that, you're correct with that. But we do have middle schools that split feed. Clayton Middle, Middle School split feeds. We have Dilworth that split feeds. Pine split fed, right? So it is, while we understand your concern with that, and it's in part of the guiding principles, we do have that. And at high school, a lot of those high school students go and go other places like Debbie Smith AACT, where they have signature academies that might entice them too. So we didn't feel that the middle school split was as detrimental as an elementary school split.
I'm going to agree with that too. There's a lot of middle schools that split. There is no way to do single feeder middle schools for everyone. So just as a personal thought, I definitely agree with that.
Okay, I, I have a couple of questions. So one question I have that you just made me think of, what, what time is the first bell at Marcy Hurst? Does anyone happen to know? Because I know when I taught middle school, it was like seven something. Seven twenty-five. Okay. So that means that if we are, we are, we are recommending that students that live on the outside boundary of the Huffaker zone, that they're getting on a bus sometime in the 6:00 AM hour then? Is that, is that, I mean, I just want to make sure I'm mathing correctly, because my brain's a little tired.
Yeah, if it's a 40-minute ride, you're looking at, you know, somewhere at about 6:45.
Okay. And then my other question about busing is, you, you mentioned that Smithridge would be outside the three-mile bus zone for Wooster. So are the students from Dodson, are they, are they walking to Wooster?
Dodson is bused to Wooster and to Vaughn.
Okay, okay.
Because of the geographic airport and all of that.
Got it. Okay, okay. Thank you. For now.
If I may, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, I'm going to keep this one simple, because there's a lot going on here. So I do like the option 4A as recommended. Thank you very much. With that being said, I have to acknowledge the plethora of emails that I've received, and I'm sure all my other constituents, my colleagues as well, and some contacts that I've had from the public. And I'm going to say tonight exactly what I told them. I said, you know what? This is really my colleague's district. So from my perspective, I'm good with option 4A, but I would like to hear from the representative where Huffaker is located and get her input, because I'm going to, I'm going to lean in your direction. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. And I know we're looking forward to hearing from public comment, because that really pushes us and really informs us. We did receive quite a bit of public comment. And, and on that, this is where the individual trustees, being as close as they are to all their communities, really comes into play. And so something that I would suggest going forward with zoning is whenever we have communities that don't have interdependencies for their outcomes, because the fates of Donner Springs, Smithridge, like Hidden Valley, all of them, where they went was all completely disassociated from the outcome for Huffaker. And, and I think going forward, whenever we have communities that have no co-dependencies whatsoever in their outcomes, it's always better and would allow the communities to feel more heard if their outcomes weren't bundled together. Because even with option five, which was the split at McCarran, it wasn't just the split at McCarran. Option five was actually the option that also put Smithridge over to Wooster, which was something that that community was really concerned about. And so I think in hearing everyone and in going forward, it would be good to have like separate conversations only when a community doesn't have any co-dependency in terms of, of the outcome with that. I'm very grateful for all the work that's happened, and we really are. Tyler is the very able chair of the zoning advisory committee right now, and we are sitting with the most former recent chair of the zoning advisory committee. And then she will point over at me. And so I don't know, Tyler, there's kind of a trend here. But, but what I will say is that we respect this work. You going into these schools, listening to everyone, trying to formulate an option that met intrinsically the needs for the most people involved, is something that we have incredible respect and appreciation for. As they say, you're doing the Lord's work, particularly when you have to sit through two and a half hours of public comment. And it's important to hear that. And I think you've done a really great job with that. So I won't belabor this, because I do have some thoughts, but I want to hear from public comment. But something that I did want to know was the, what was the discussion around the full separation of Huffaker from Reno High? Because Huffaker has been going to Reno High either in whole or part, because Huffaker was previously a split feeder. So up until four years ago, little history lesson, and I know this, because I was the zoning chair that led this recommendation. Huffaker was traditionally a split feeder because of its very unique geographic boundaries. That's why colleagues, we heard from so many people in those more rural regions asking to be returned to their historic ties. But fundamentally, Huffaker has been going to Reno in whole or part since the day they opened their school, so almost 40 years ago. So can you help me understand, did that come up? Or was that more something that kind of came up afterwards? Only because I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to talk about that before the public commenters come up.
Yeah, I think it's, it's absolutely an important question. And I would say it came up in pieces, because that community does have different ties across that geography of Reno. We heard from some parents that they really enjoy going to Hurst and Galena and feel a tie there. We heard from the similar parents who are like, we love Swope and Reno, and that is our history. And that is just the nature of Huffaker. And I think what, what we struggled specifically with ZAC was to hear a clear ask of where to draw the line from that community. And so I'm grateful that you guys are looking at a few other options on that. And I think that if we can align on where is that natural split for that community, and I would welcome public comment on that as well, because I'm, I'm curious. But that, that is the piece that we were, we, of the puzzle that we couldn't, couldn't find.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to just echo how grateful I am for your work, Mr. Rogers and Ms. Zimmerman. Thank you very much. And to all the members of the zoning committee. Yeah, this is complex. This is a big one. And I'm so glad we got two subject matter experts in addition to yourself and members of the committee out here. So thank you for your work. A lot of the area does impact my at-large district, particularly the Smithridge area. So option 4A, just to clarify and put a record at, does keep the high schools intact, correct?
So option 4A, just to clarify and put a record at, does keep the high schools intact, correct?
By intact, what do you mean?
Yes, yeah, and I had option 4A with the Smith Ridge community still going to Damani and the other communities.
Yes, they will continue to feed to where they currently are.
Yeah, that's the thrust of my question, thank you. And then talking about the Huffacre communities for a moment, saw the attachments. Just to clarify, were those zoning documents or does that coming from staff?
That comes from staff and we create those maps with those dividing lines so that you can see them and the different variations. So we do have a demographer that creates them.
And, but were those maps shown to the zoning committee?
Not all of those options, just option 1 and option 5.
So you're bringing those as additional options for us?
Those are additional options based off of the discussion and the comments that we received. So we thought we'd bring whatever we could to you guys to make the best decision.
That's what I wanted to understand. And then again, Huffacre, if I'm looking at option 2, that in fact keeps the current zones as they are, generally speaking, with Reno to the north, Galena to the south. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay, that's great. I think that concludes my comments. I was concerned about the walk to Wooster, so that alleviates a lot of that too with option 4A. So thank you again for your continued help.
I think this is a good time to break for public comment. So we'll perhaps request to have some maps or options come up after public comment and then kind of see where things go as we build consensus. But let's hear from the public.
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Pablo. Thank you so much for being our first speaker tonight.
You're welcome. So hello, guys, my name is Pablo Navaduran. I'm a 1/3 resident for 25 years, including 10 years of Donner Springs area. When I went to Donner Springs Elementary School. And I'm currently living on New World area for 15 years. So I wide regard for zoning advice community recommendation, option 4A, for resoning Pine Middle School feeder school beginning in the 2026, 2027 school year, especially in the Smith Ridge Elementary School community. I will appreciate it. Thank you for Ty Rogers, Sharon Coley, and all Tammy's sentiment and a couple of projects, Adam C. C., for all the work. And thank you for Brad Trilla for school planner, because numbers don't lie, so. So I'm not against a recommendation to send Smith Ridge student to Vaughn Middle School. And, but I will support resoning Smith Ridge to Vaughn Middle School because Vaughn need enrollment, we need a vest on inner city Reno. And to reason that, Vaughn will have more elective. So, because middle school, and middle school doesn't care if Taiwan school or not, you need a elective, you have a elective based on a student population. If you have fewer students, and then fewer elective, real simple. And high school is way different than middle school. Because Wooster is a Taiwan school. I do know they lose like four teachers, over 200, 200 students over 10 years. So I will support us ministry to deploy Damani or Vaughn Damani after my community proposed to reason to Wooster High School because of a vaccine and vaccination issue. So, so I want to send the message to Huffacre Elementary School. And I do support option H2. That means we zone the north of Windy Hill of Huffacre to Swope and Reno. And the south of Windy Hill to Galena, Hurst and Galena, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran.
Justin Solomine.
Hello, Justin! So this is so great, we've spoken, you've sent us emails, and I know you're gonna come up and speak, but truly, I also want to acknowledge you as a student leader and as a community leader in this process. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to support our neighbors at Huffacre to get their Windy Hill because if we can keep our stability, then I think they should too and they have the capacity. I think what the zoning committee sent was a huge message and what probably was the most significant student response on both sides. And that they overread the staff recommendation, which was option 1, to send Smith Ridge to Vaughn and Wooster. In fact, they almost voted for option 4. It was a 5-4 vote to send us to DePole, two members were absent. You know how option 4 was to build a $100 million school at Vaughn and to have that at 50%, 60%? They almost sent that message, that we are not gonna put these communities in the school, we are gonna keep them with the support system. So I think a message that the board should really think about as we go ahead and as we build these huge schools. Because I think Vaughn, it's a 1,200 capacity building, it's gonna be underutilized no matter what we do. You know, we need to think about ways of reutilizing this. But I think as we build these massive schools, a question that I think should guide this entire district is, are we willing to force communities to fill these schools? Because when we had our private meeting, we expressed a huge desire to go to DePole with our parents with the zoning. And there is the space at DePole to keep us there. And we actually prefer to split at the elementary over the middle school level. So are we going to have these communities fill these schools that, you know, that we potentially don't even want to go to? Or are we gonna keep the stability and the relationships? And I think under option 4A was kind of both, in that we are going to fill Vaughn, but we do get to keep the stability at Damani Ranch High School. I personally don't think a lot of families with school-aged children are gonna live in Tellus Valley with those homes there. And I don't think overcrowding at Damani Ranch will be a problem for the next 28 to 30 years. There are no long-term projections. There was space to put us at DePole. It would keep that school with us there at 85% long-term, there was the space there. But I guess as we plan these schools, as we plan the opening of Wooster High School, in 10 years, Wooster will have 900 students. Are we going to build a 2,000-student building there and disrupt communities from their historical feeder schools? And just force them to go into that school? So I think this really needs to be a good conversation. And I know the district, we have multiple leases, multiple programs, multiple teachers housed everywhere. They can use this open space at Vaughn and some of these newer schools. Because Vaughn will still be, even if we go to Vaughn, they're still gonna be at 60% 10 years from now. So, you know, I think what our community valued was ultimately our South Reno stability and that our ability to stay and to feed into South Reno. And we're gonna fight for DePole two years from now when Pine opens, and that's kind of what we want. If the DePole numbers go down, that's kind of what we want. Option 4 still increases Vaughn's enrollment by about 200 students. I actually think they offer more electives than DePole because they are Title I. But yeah, we're just in this for integration with South Reno. And I think Damani Ranch is a very beautiful school. It's 40% Hispanic, 40% white, so is this district. And it's, you wouldn't expect that from a school next to a gated community. So I think it's a really beautiful thing to see, thank you.
Thank you so much, Justin, very well done.
Antonio Angelo.
Welcome, Antonio. And I know you're gonna introduce yourself, but another community leader who has dedicated countless hours, and that includes hours on the phone with me too. So welcome and done with for being here, Antonio.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees. I can't really follow the Energizer Bunny over here. But yes, basically, I second, you know, the Zach recommendation. For the record, my name's Antonio Angelo. I am the current head of PTA for Smith Ridge. And basically, we preferred, when we were originally talking to Zach, we preferred option 4, but we are happy with the recommendation that Zach is making, having the conversation with Madam President and a couple other trustees. I don't remember off the top of my head, I've been making too many phone calls. That we are going to be flexible. We're gonna create stronger ties with our community partners. And we expect, yeah, to continue to push everything for our kids. Thank you for your time, and I will look forward to talking to every one of you if you guys want to reach out.
Thank you for your leadership on this.
Elise Rose.
Welcome, Elise. Another community organizing leader for her community. We're just, this is like a monster lineup of people, welcome.
Okay, good evening, board members. I must have drawn the short straw because I'm the only Huffacre parent here. Everyone else is at soccer and baseball. They apologize, they all sent emails, I know you read them all. So my name is Elise Rose, and I am a proud Huffacre parent as well as a Swope parent. And I am here to advocate for a zoning solution that is fair, logical, and honors the legacy of our community. Tonight, I urge you to adopt the proposed split at the natural geographic divider of Windy Hill. This solution reflects not just a line on a map, but the lived reality of hundreds of families who have built their lives, relationships, and educational expectations around these communities. Huffacre has been aligned with Swope and Reno High in part for almost 35 years now. We are not just zoned for these schools, we are invested in them. Our families are alum, volunteers, business partners, coaches, PFA leaders, and hold longstanding community partnerships with these schools. Our children play sports and extracurricular activities that also align with the Swope feeder schools. When we play soccer, we don't go south, we go north, which is something that most of you probably don't know. The issue is deeply personal for our community. I am the incoming PFA president at Swope. I have also been on the Huffacre PTA as well. My family and many others are actively engaged in supporting these schools, not just for our children, but for the betterment of the entire school community. The Windy Hill split is a common sense geographic solution that aligns with natural topography and prioritizes proximity, safety, and community integrity. If anyone's driven up and down that hill before, you know, half of our community is on this side and the other half is on the other side. And it is exactly what the parents are asking for with the poll that was taken at Huffacre, and this was given to Zach if anybody needs a copy. It is almost an exact 50-50 split for what we're asking for. Please do not allow short-term numbers and inconsistent reasoning to override the longstanding legacy, safety, and engagement of the Huffacre community. We are not asking for special treatment, we are asking for equal treatment. We urge you to do what's right for these families who have remained loyal to these schools for generations. Please preserve our families' legacies and the lives that our students have already built. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rose.
The board received emails from Jennifer Rose, Jordan Schoonover, Erica Fries, David Kitchen, Kerr Romeyer, the Bugs family, Jessica Thompson, Kelly Roper, Jeff Schuenbachelor, and Mary Nevin.
All right, could we possibly get our team back? Oh, we have one more, so sorry.
Karen Vargas.
Welcome, Ms. Vargas, thank you for being here to speak on this. Don't be sorry. I like the way you just slipped right in. That's the way you make sure that you're the last word on this.
Exactly. I just told Justin, I was like, you literally said everything that I wanted to say. So I was like, I don't even know if I should go. But also, I am the vice president of the PTA over at Smith Ridge, and I have four kids there. So I told them, I was like, I'm gonna come over here. And I was like, I'm excited about this, the recommendation that Zach is making, which is us going to Vaughn. I was like, I think we can make, eventually create a PTA over there. And I was like, and better that school. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much. Gosh, this is, I just, okay, so I need to bring attention to this while you guys come up. This is the power of the Zach. Back in the day, zoning at board meetings was not like this. So this is the power of this community group of volunteers, staff members, parents, invested community members, doing this work for us so that we have the pleasure of lovely comments uplifting different communities and ultimately plus-one-ing so many of the decisions coming out. So truly, we owe you a debt of gratitude. So before I jump in with some of my thoughts, and JJ, I am gonna ask you to please queue up the Huffacre attachment. Chair Rogers, I do want to ask, what is your feedback from us? One of the things I know we've been talking about is the timeline of how we make zoning decisions related to school closures. You've just lived through this among other things. Is there any feedback you have from us as we move towards potentially choosing one and building consensus?
Yeah, thank you for the question, President Smith. I think we heard it just in public comment, the questions of how are we choosing the size of our facilities? And does that have impact on zoning decisions? I think the lived experience here is that, especially because this is a new problem for zoning. Historically, it has been overcrowding. Now we are solving the problem of the beauty of WC1. And how do we create facilities that excite our students and are utilized effectively? And I think this learning experience has sort of reinforced in my mind that the sooner we can think about the right zoning and factor that into the facilities that we are designing, I can understand. I also understand that there are implications of the timelines of these. And I know this is something that the board is stewing on, but this is another reason we represented 4A for Wooster specifically, is to give us as a community collectively optionality for the future of that facility, knowing where these lines will be drawn.
Yeah, I know you had a comment around those lines, and then I'm gonna jump in with making some recommendations.
Yeah, so I had sent this in as a question, and so I really appreciate that thought process. And I know we've been talking about this, but I have some questions about the, I guess, the future of the current Pine campus and the plan to potentially merge Dodson and Smith Ridge. As it stands, they would all go to the same middle school, I just want to confirm. But then the plan would be to, currently, that part of that zone would then go to Damani and the other part would go to Wooster, unless you revisit those lines? Is that where we stand?
Yes, and that was intentional from the Zach discussion.
Okay, and so my question is what, I guess maybe if you could give us a little more about the conversation that was had about that eventuality of those two schools combining and kind of how the whole committee, you know, felt about those decisions?
I think it was one of multiple different aspects and variables that we were juggling. And I think that this is where Zach split. And I think that there was a recognition that there's a consolidation going to happen. We don't know, we didn't not get information of that this is exactly what is gonna happen. It was that there is a general board intent or direction that there is a consolidation of Dodson and Smith Ridge into the future of Pine. And so Zach said, okay, well, why don't we think about what you've just said, which is let's draw the line so that they're clear collectively on the middle school, so not that Dodson is then going to a different school versus, and the line. So he tried to be that future. But there was concern from other members on Zach that like, well, what about Donner Springs? Would they be part of this equation? And if that's the case, there's an unknown variable, and then here we are again drawing the lines. And so that is where the split of Zach really occurred, which was like that unknown variable and giving ourselves optionality.
Okay, and then, sorry, just a second follow-up to that. So I wanna shout you out, Chair Rogers, that the, aligning the options with the board policy was really something that you pushed when you became the vice chair, so that we were using that common language in the conversation. So I really appreciate Tammy and your team adding them to each individual slide, that was great. But in this option 4A, we do have several incompatibilities, right? And so I just want to confirm that the 1, 2, and 5 incompatibilities, are those related to Huffacre? Or are those related to the other schools? Because I think this is where President Smith was trying to go with this, is that these are two really separate conversations, and they kind of all got pulled into one, which I'm sure was a lot of mind-bending work on your part. And so I appreciate that. So I just wanted to kind of confirm where your office was coming from, 4A having 1, 2, and 5 being incompatible with 7107.
So it was both, right? Because Huffacre split-feeds, right? If that was the option, that's not compatible. Then you also have the Smith Ridge is closer actually to Wooster than it is to Damani. Those are, so, and then trying to keep neighborhoods with geographic boundaries, right? McCarran is kind of a natural, moving them north and south based off of that. So it's really all of them have that in mind when we look at it.
I just wanted to keep that in my mind. And then I just, I wanna really speak to what our incredible student leader just said, that when we are making decisions with the upcoming FMP, that I really, really hope that we can continue to have open dialogue with our communities about the right sizing of schools. I am a believer in our FMP. I am so excited about the investment that we're gonna make in communities that absolutely deserve it. But I think a one-size-fits-all school design is something that we really, really need to make sure we're having conversations about with each individual community and making some of these zoning decisions ahead of time rather than post. Because I heard a lot in all the public comment, we're hearing at these meetings that you just need to fill this brand-new school, it just needs to be full, it just needs to be full. And I know that wasn't the message that you guys were trying to send, but that was the, some of the community impression. some of the community impression. And, and I know how, I know how this goes, because I, I've sat through many of these zoning meetings, but I think it's really, really important that we continue to collaborate on, as we start to approve these consolidated schools, I, I just really hope that we can continue to have really transparent conversations about making sure that we're, we're building the right size of school for those communities. Um, so, Justin, we have committee work for you going forward. I hope you're planning on sticking around here, um, because that was incredible. Thank you for all of your work, um, with that. So I think I'm done with questions for now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna get to the one that I'm gonna, um, advocate for and, um, but I see that you have a question or, yeah?
It's a comment. Thank you, President Smith. So I went to Anderson, well, first Libby C. Booth, um, Anderson, but then bounced back to Veterans, Vaughn, and Wooster. And kind of adding to what, um, Trustee Hall just said, we probably should have done some thinking about Vaughn before, because, you know, those neighborhoods are kind of aging out. I mean, the reason I actually went to Veterans and Vaughn and Wooster is because my grandparents lived there, and so I could just walk to their houses on Cordoni and Basser, and we lived out in Lakewood. But, but the neighborhoods were old then. I mean, it was all these little Italian grandparents around there, and it's, we've gotta think about the age of the neighborhoods and what, what makes up those neighborhoods. Because a lot of those neighborhoods, they are, they're aging out. And supporting a huge middle school in that area is gonna be tough, because they're old, old like me. So I think we really do what, um, Trustee Hall said. We've gotta be thinking about these things. Because now, now it's crunch time, and how do we get bodies into that school? And it shouldn't be by making families uncomfortable and splitting up, um, communities. It's, it's, it's not fair. We've gotta be thinking ahead a little bit, so. But I do have to say, the work that you guys are doing is insane. And unlike Trustee Hall and President Smith, I would not want to be on that committee ever, ever, ever. But I appreciate, I appreciate that there are those that do, and I want to thank you very much for all the work.
Thank you. All right. JJ, would it be possible, please, to go to option H2? And, and while JJ brings that up, so I am incredibly honored to get to be the trustee representing District D. I share the responsibility, of course, with both of our at-large trustees. Um, but my District D has the honor of representing many of the schools that we're talking about today, including Pine and Smith Ridge and Wooster and Vaughn and Swope and Reno High and Huffaker and all of these, like, this is my jam. These, these are my people. This is where I live. Um, and I would be remiss to not point out how proud I am to be the trustee for Wooster High School. And I am looking forward, and I have already discussed with Superintendent Ernst, and facilities knows this too, I'm very excited about the project for Wooster. I believe that that school, uh, deserves to be uplifted in the way that we are doing across our entire community. I'm incredibly, incredibly excited about the work that's happening with Principal Kitchen, their dual-language learning programs. They are actually doing things that is not happening in any other high school. And I'm excited to tell those stories and to highlight all that. Nicole, who's here with us today, is a proud Wooster Colt. So is Victoria Gomez, who is on to this world and doing great things. And so we have a laundry list of incredible Colts, including one of our trustees, and I, I have a lot of pride and, um, respect for that school. So it, it needed to be said. And on that note, uh, so what I'm gonna suggest to my colleagues here is, after listening to many people and having many conversations, I would like to submit for consideration to my colleagues' option H2 as it relates to Huffaker Elementary School. This very much aligns to the comments that we received, but to defend why it is, I feel this is the right choice. It offers a clean line. Had you known me when I was on zoning, I believe a good zoning map should not need a whole story about why that was chosen. You should be able to look at a boundary line and simply understand it. If you have to tell a whole story about who, no, no, you lost it. A map should just make sense. So H2 offers us a clean line, clear geographical boundaries, sustainable enrollment, and it respects the historical high school matriculation of these communities, where they have gone to school and where they want to either continue or return to. And so, um, I will offer that to my colleagues.
Um, and, and I would just like to add, being a Galena parent and a, uh, South Reno resident, that a good lot of the south of that Windy Hill, those, those families, a lot of them are on variances already to Galena and hers. So I think, um, I would agree. And so if we don't, I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready for that.
So.
No?
Oh, I'm gonna, okay. I just got some advice that I, I can make the motion.
Oh, okay.
And, and this is gonna be, it's coming at you hot, Vice President Mayberry. I'm gonna pass the gavel over to you, because I'm gonna make this motion.
There you go.
And so I'm gonna have you, uh, call for the vote. Here you go. You can, I don't want, I don't want you to have to hit.
No, don't say that. We need you still.
All right, so.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion. Go ahead.
All right. So Mr. Vice President, um, I would like to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the zoning advisory committee options 4A and H2 to modify the zoning boundaries of the following schools as a result of the construction of the new E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, effective beginning of 2026-27 school year. Smith Ridge Elementary School, Huffaker Elementary School, Edwin Dodson Elementary School, Donner Springs Elementary School, Hidden Valley Elementary School, E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, Darrell C. Swope Middle School, Edward L. Pine Middle School, Marcy Hers Middle School, Kendall DePoli Middle School, Galena High School, Reno High School, Earl Wooster High School, and Demani Ranch High School.
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you. We have a motion by, uh, President Smith to approve item 3.05 with, uh, options 4A and H2, uh, with a second by, uh, Trustee Hall. Uh, any further comments? I know I have a comment I want to make. I just want to say real quick, uh, I, I wanted to say this early, and I apologize, but I, you know, this was very complicated. This, as President Beth, uh, Smith noted, this is what our democracy is all about. This gives me great hope, particularly when we are involved in a, in a time where there's so many ugly narratives and division. Uh, I know there's a lot of concerns, particularly amongst a lot of communities, a lot of diverse communities. And here we are, very civil, agreeable discourse. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Rogers, Chair Rogers, uh, and everybody that has come together to provide public comment to help this board get to where, where we are today. Uh, this is how democracy works. The system works, so thank you. Um, all right, having said that, yeah, I think, I think Superintendent. Uh, and I do want to, Superintendent Ernst has some comments as well. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Vice President Mayberry. Um, I, I wanted to also reiterate, Chair Rogers, Mrs. Zimmerman, a lot of work went into such a complicated puzzle. And, um, so much, uh, there was a great deal of response to our community in hearing, hearing the desires. I wanted to say thank you to the community for, for leaning in to a process that can be very difficult, having been a part of zoning for many, many years. It's never an easy puzzle. This was a particularly complicated one. And so I really appreciate the leadership, the extra efforts from the entire team to really find a viable solution, and couldn't agree with Vice President Mayberry more on his sentiments, and just wanted to, to offer our gratitude for your work. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Phoenix, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I just, you guys already said it all, but I think earlier, Alex, uh, mentioned that, you know, the colleagues that have been there, you have the experience, you have the oversight, you got some good looks at it, you know, to provide that feedback. But more importantly was the community today. It really kind of moved me that you came here, you stood up, and you said, hey, by the way, you know, and, uh, I really appreciate that. So I just wanted to echo everything that everybody else said, but that was my main two pieces that I wanted to hit you guys. So thank you.
Okay. Seeing no lights on, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. All right. Motion carries unanimously.
Hey, you gotta love when there's applause after a zoning vote. Woo-hoo! Heck, yeah, folks! All right, thank you so, so much. Yes, and, and Ms. Clay, thank you so much for being there. We see you hiding in the back. We appreciate your work. You are an awesome addition to the zoning advisory committee, and thank you for answering the call for volunteering and being involved, so. All right, that closes item 3.05. Hey, Vice President Mayberry, you did a great job with that. Uh, and that closes Section 3 in its entirety. We'll move on now to Section 4. These are our reports, starting with our student representative report with item 401.
Um, okay, so I have a couple things. So starting with number one, um, there's a bill, AB 316, would have given a voice to allow for student representation on Nevada school boards. Assemblymember Torres Flores killed it, and she shut the door on students. A petition has been made that will bring it, that will bring it back, since it died in the committee, even though it was anonymously supported by the committee, but the chair killed it. So please feel free to look at the petition. I have a couple flyers here, and you guys can look at it once we're done. And one more thing is, for our student voice, we have elections coming up soon, so expect to see some of our candidates in the meetings to get a feel for things. Yay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that closes item 4.01 and brings us now to our board reports, 402. All right, I'm looking at both sides. I forget who started last time. Let's go with Trustee Phoenix, because that's, because he's got a yellow tie on, so that drew my eye.
Uh, the highlight for me was, uh, Nevada Skills USA. So, uh, a lot of you may have gone to that, but for me, the first time, it was awesome to see. I got to sit on the interview, uh, portion of it, and I got to see how the, uh, the collaborative effort with the community that was working on that construction site there. It was pretty amazing to see them. So the next slide, uh, we had local reps from the union there. They're all about it. And, uh, we talked a little briefly about, you know, recruiting from high school, recruiting for the community, giving back, you know, let's keep it strong, let's keep it here. And they, they were all in support of that. So the next slide, as well as teamwork, so they've been doing this, uh, program for the last 25 years. So they've been at it pretty hard. Uh, next slide, again, just, uh, some students hard at work, one more, and that's it there. So, uh, with that being said, uh, overview, uh, was, uh, Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry representatives working together to ensure America has skilled workforce, and its mission is to help members become world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens. So again, a shout-out goes to, uh, Matt McKay for the Office of Teaching and Learning and Leadership, and Josh, uh, Josh Herzog for Career and Technical Education. So again, I wanted to make sure that they get out there, because they're taking their time and their effort to do all this. And, uh, let's see with, uh, and also all the students that participated. And again, for those local partners. So again, lastly, just everyone, uh, continuing to, uh, evolve and make it better. So I'm hoping that, uh, we give our, uh, staff the skills that they need for future competitions down the road. Um, I also gave a presentation to, uh, the General Counsel on Great Basin Natives. Some of you, I sent that email to, that podcast, so take a look at that. And then IT, IT, where's IT at? They're not here yet? They still here? Oh, they're always here. You can see them here right now. Without them, none of this will happen. So Diane and I went and visited with IT, got the tour, and I have to give them nothing but love, and I will champion them for anything that they need IT-wise, because without them making it happen behind the scenes, none of these things that you want to have off right on time, when it's left, is gonna happen. So without that, without further ado, uh, shout-out to Chris Turner and Joseph Gallegos, who gave us that tour. And then, uh, out to North Valleys, they had their student parade, uh, which was great. So again, a shout-out to Tombas Almacaluso, taking that innovative idea and moving it forward, recognizing the students amongst his peers. And then I went out to Silver Lake and Lemon Valley, and something unique out there is Flamingo Friday at Silver Lake. So that's how they do their positive recognition to their students. And then, uh, the 60th year anniversary at Lemon Valley Elementary is coming up. So again, uh, give them some love. And then, uh, again, I have 10 more seconds here. The Education Alliance Board, uh, went to them, give them a thank you, but I learned a whole lot about what they do and then what a great asset to, uh, the district. So thank you.
Are we going in order? Okay. Well, I was not here last time, um, because I was in Washington DC for We the People National Finals, not as a school board member, but for my, my actual job. Um, but just before that, Dr. Nicolette and I attended the National School Boards Association. Um, I have to say, the one thing that I took away from that that just keeps resonating in my, my brain is, um, the White Pine Superintendent gave an incredible presentation. We flew all the way to Atlanta to hear from our, our neighbor to the east, and he said, "Sometimes what counts can't be counted." And that has really given me a lot of thought as I make decisions and think through things. So, um, that was, that was something really, really meaningful, but I think we both, we both had lots of other ideas, and we're, we're coming at student voice with some really good ideas, hopefully. We had some really great fun things. Um, and then, um, I personally attended the AACT Open House the other night, because my son, um, is going to be attending there. But I just, I wanted to take this opportunity to shout out the principal of AACT, who has the incredible energy to, to take this school to the next level. People were so excited about the changes that are occurring at that school, and I just, I just wanted to give him a special shout-out. Um, Jason Maddock has just really taken it, he's also really into the Trailblazer thing, so if you go there, be prepared to have hiking boots. Um, it's a whole thing he's got going on. But it was such a full house. The street was filled, um, he had, he just had, it was such a great plan. So I just wanted to give him a shout-out, and I am excited to be a Trailblazer parent now. That's all I have.
Thank you. So I first want to say congratulations to Reno High, taking fifth, and We the People, and having attended it for the first time this year at UNR. It is an amazing program, and what those kids do is absolutely amazing. I attended, uh, Wooster's IB Showcase with, um, Trustee, um, Woodley and Trustee Nicolette, where they were highlighting foods, flour-making art, music, and hot air ballooning. This is Wyatt Smith, and he is so passionate about hot air ballooning, and he had all great things to say about Sergeant Diamond. So, I mean, it was just amazing what these kids are doing. I went to a dinner with, um, invited by City Council, Sparks City Councilman Joe Rodriguez, former trustee, to honor our fallen officers and support their families. And what an amazing event. Um, just love and support and amazing stories. Visited Inspire, PRTF, and Jan Evans. And some people might take this is not a positive, but it, it is a positive. These kids have an opportunity to get back on track. Also, school visits, Lena Juniper, Florence Strait, Desert Skies, HUG, Alice Maxwell, Kate Smith, Agnes Rizley, uh, Sparks Middle School, Sun Valley Elementary School, and Robert Mitchell. Um, these are the soccer cheerleaders. They are so stinking cute. So if you would play just their little cheer, this is them doing, uh, one of their cheers for me.
Hey, listen up. Three, two, one. Rock, roll, everybody, everybody clap your hands. We're all playing, we're all playing, we're best in the game.
They're awesome. Um, all, they are wonderful. I want to give a shout-out to Nevada teacher, uh, Teachers of Tomorrow, Nevada Teacher of the Year, third-grade teacher Mackenzie Caulfield from Robert Mitchell. She is amazing. You feel her passion and love when you walk in, uh, the room. She's in with the eight finalists for the nation right now, and also got to thank with. thank with Trustee Phoenix, Education Alliance, and the amazing things that they do building up our district. And I just thank them so very much for their work in helping our kids. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam President. So, one of my visits was at HUG High School. I got to walk the campus with Mr. Mack, even though he was crippled, because he just had surgery. He was walking up and down and all around. It was a very beautiful experience, very busy campus. He's working really diligently on changing the culture, culture up there, which is great. I got to see it firsthand. The past Halloween, they did the trunk or treat for kids in the neighborhood. Obviously, it wasn't for the high school kids, but the high school kids were actually the ones that put it together, the different clubs. That's, that was wonderful. I also got to meet Nikki's brother, Jeff. He works up there as the dean. I also visited AACT, Academy of Arts, Careers and Technology with Mr. Maddock. He wanted me to share with you that they are the top-ranked high school in the state, and he's sending kids to Harvard. 65% of their students are attending UNR or TMCC, and some with full rides, which is funny, because I thought the whole point of the Academy of Arts, Careers and Technology is that not everyone has to go to college, but yet, he still has a high success rate there. They have multiple state championships from FBLA, from different subjects, Intro to Business Communication, Digital Video Production. They have a bakery chef currently at the Pepper Mill, who's a senior. Kyle Moyer, he's on the front cover of Edible Reno Tahoe Magazine. And eight years in a row, they have a 100% graduation rate. So, go AACT. I also got to visit ACE, the Academy for Career Education. It's one of our sponsored charter schools. They have approximately 275 students. Most of them come from Nevada, from Spanish Springs and HUG High School, 58% Hispanic. They are also Multiple Skills USA National Champions on several occasions. They also have the largest high school diesel shop in the state. They also provide bachelor degrees through TMCC for Architecture. I also visited with Sean Hall up at Spanish Springs, and that was very interesting, because I had to break out my passport to make it that far out. But it's pretty far from Northwest Reno. But I did want to share, he had some kids he wants me to recognize, Lillian Gilpin, who won arts awards, competing in ROTC, and is going to UNR as a music major, going to the Met in New York. That is her desire. Ms. Yom is a teacher nationally recognized for the arts, and I did see her student drawings. They were amazing. They were beautiful. And then he also wanted to acknowledge Colonel Wales in the ROTC program, their commanding officer. And I also got to visit the zoning advisory committee. My intent was to express our gratitude, but that meeting was too intense. So, I'll be going to the next one. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll be short. I had a lot of personal and professional commitments the last few weeks, so I focused on some of those. But I did have a quick opportunity to visit Whitehead Elementary, and had the pleasure of attending the Yachtley Concert at the Grand Sierra. There's a benefit for communities in school. If you know the January, the January music, the yacht music, you know. Yeah. And I don't want to embarrass them, but I'm going to. President Kalen Evans of WEA happened to be on the floor. He didn't know I was there. And he's got some moves. He's got some moves. It's good to see you, even though you didn't see me.
Looked out there, no pictures. I'm going to expand just a little bit on, on some of the things that I attended with my colleagues. Number one, Skills USA. Quick story about Skills USA. I've been doing it so long, it used to be VICA. And here's a fun story. So, it was about 2002, as near as I can remember, and it was when it was VICA. And our students were on their way from Reno down to Vegas for the competition, and the bus broke down. And what was really cool was it was a bus full of the diesel students. Guess who fixed the bus? Yeah, got it. The students did. It was a really awesome, awesome story, awesome story. I attended the JROTC Awards, McQueen, Reno High School, and Spanish Springs, and my colleague, Trustee Jake was there. It was wonderful. And just to give you an idea of some of the awards, I mean, this truly is a family of JROTCers, whether it's at one school or all schools, all the battalions have so much in common, and their, their leadership, and their skill building, and their attention to really social, emotional, and academics, and community service. And some of the awards were the UNR JROTC Award, actually ROTC Award, Veterans of Foreign Wars Awards, Military Order of the Purple Heart Award, Distinguished Cadet, Brigade Citizenship Award, and many, many more. And it's so wonderful, because, you know, these kids, the way they cheer each other on, and, and the families cheering for them. Yes, our superintendent, Joe Ernst, was there, and I think he had as much fun as the kiddos did. And they really do support each other. They are a team, and it's really a beautiful thing. And they're, they're charting their, their future. And the leaders really do an absolutely wonderful job, both, both spiritually, emotionally, academically, and helping them to be leaders and chart their own course. It's a wonderful thing. And like Trustee Jake said, we went to IT, and I will add a little bit on that, is something we learned about Infinite Campus that I had no idea about, is there is an Infinite Campus Governance Board, and they are throughout Nevada. So, it's not just like, you know, people in the back office, IT, making decisions. This board, Infinite Campus Governance Board, they make decisions for throughout the state. And, and as you can imagine, because, because we're mighty and strong and smart, and we have more resources, we are really a template for our other districts throughout the state, and so we're a voice for them. And I will say thank you, and I've got boom done.
I like the boom at the end. Yeah, like backdrop. So, I don't think any of them are here anymore, but I, this is worth saying again. I want to say thank you so much to the community leaders who advocated respectfully and supportively among each other, particularly Justin Salamine, Elise Rose, and Antonio Angulo. You really set the standard for how communities can work together to uplift and amplify what's right for all communities, without necessarily having to fight with each other to do that. So, I'm super, super proud that you are all a part of District D. Huge congratulations, fifth in the nation, We the People, Reno High School. Yes, yes, that is also the daytime gig of one of our very important trustees, Trustee Hall. So, very, very proud of them. They just came back from Washington DC, and we are just incredibly grateful that we clearly have so many students who have a firm grasp on the Constitution. So, congratulations, of course, to all the new principals that have been named, and I have a special shout out for some District D principals. I can't wait to be working with you, and then also some thank yous with some upcoming retirements. So, Richard Maris, he is going to be the new principal at Mount Rose K8 School of Languages, because the incredible Chrissy Brown is retiring. We also have Lisa Love, that we will be welcoming at Huffaker Elementary School, who we just talked about. And that is due to Leah Anderson's retirement. We will miss her so much. The third one is still a TBD, because we did just recently find that Mrs. Melissa Thurman at Collin Ranch Elementary will be retiring. I think that's posted, and I can't wait to see who I congratulate in that role. So, thank you so much to all the retiring administrators and all of the new administrators being placed. Something that I wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about is a very moving experience that I had. I toured the Inspire Academy, the psychiatric residential treatment facility, and the Jan Evans Juvenile Justice. So, we hear a lot about, we educate all kids, we want an education for all, get a lot of systems talk about that. Well, Clerk Woodley, Trustee Westlake, and I really got to see what it looks like to truly educate all children. It's not just a logo on somebody's squishy ball. It is something that we really do here in Washoe County. I was incredibly moved. So, thank you truly to Principal Carrie McDonald, Christine Echols of Washoe County, and then also Lance Medsker. It was very moving to see the way that we educate and support children in every phase and moment in their life, where they may be facing a challenge. But education is always there for them, and so is the Washoe County School District. These schools all fall under a new organization that we recently saw with Chief Jen Van Tress, and I've already asked Superintendent Ernst to think about bringing something forward at a future item, where we can really explore Ms. Van Tress's organization as well. So, thank you. So, that closes item 4.02, and we go on now to our superintendent's report, 403.
Thank you, President Smith. I'll work to keep it brief. Had a couple of school visits that I wanted to share, because those are what we all enjoy so much. Had a chance to meet superstar kindergarten student at Juniper, who won the writing contest as a kindergarten student, and her ambition was to become a teacher. And that's what she wanted to do someday. It was quite lovely. I had a chance to visit Sepulveda's fifth grade leadership slash student voice team, and one of the challenges that we have been working on is increasing student engagement throughout the district, and that is by doing a lot of cool things at school for kids. And so, they had shared all of the things that they did at school to make the year more memorable, and things that they really enjoyed. So, those were really a couple of nice visits. I concur on the school principal hiring, leadership's essential. Our schools, our school committees, our area superintendents have been deeply immersed in the work, and I'm really pleased with our selection of principals and the leadership development that has occurred within our school district. The JROTC ceremonies and celebrations have been just exceptional. They really honor the students and all members of the military in respectful and meaningful ways, and they're really some wonderful celebrations to be a part of. And then, last couple of things, just recently, we were able to acknowledge one of our employees for a Woman of Achievement in Washoe County School District, that she will be celebrated at the Nevada Women's Fund Luncheon in May. And that person, if those that may not be aware, is Kendra Fox. And Kendra has been just, just, it was, what was most rewarding about the experience was we announced it to her with other staff present, and the comments that other staff had shared, including comments from Deputy McMaster, that the impact that Kendra Fox has had on curriculum in our school district and instruction has been deep, long, and profound. And so, we're really happy to honor and recognize Kendra. And then, so often, our school police officers are here, and they keep good eye on everything on our board meetings, and just wanted to make sure that we acknowledged and said thanks to our school police officers for all their commitment and work at our board meetings. So, thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you. That closes item 4.03 and Section 4 in its entirety, and we'll go now to Section 5, our closing item, starting with item 5.01, our public comment. Who are we welcoming up first, JJ?
Michelle Hogan.
Welcome, Ms. Hogan. Thank you so much for being here. Nope. Yes, yep. And JJ will make sure that you've got the right number of them, and then get those distributed out. Thank you so much.
I counted. They should be correct.
Thank you.
It's like hidden underneath.
You, you can go ahead and get started, yeah.
I did provide you with a paper. If you see on there, don't rip it off yet. There is a picture of children. There are some kids with a heart face and some kids with an emoji. They're all little kids, about the same amount of kids, correct? Well, if you turn it over and you peel it off, you will see that it states, it's okay, it won't rip, it's just tape. The hearts are my students, and the emojis are our first grade students. I am a pre-K sped teacher at Bernice Matthews. I currently have 17 kids in my classroom. They're all ages three to five. My first grade colleague has 16. I have more students in my class than she does. Not saying her job isn't hard. We all know our jobs are all hard. My students are three, four, and five years old. So, I am dealing with kids that are a diverse age frame. I have 17 kids that are on IEPs. I have six out of the 17 that have severe to moderate behaviors. 16 out of my 17 kids have language needs. I have 17 out of 17 kids that are dependent on me 100% of their day. You guys earlier, Trustee Westlake and Hall, you mentioned the outstanding, how it would be just atrocious for these high schoolers and middle schoolers to potentially ride the bus for 40 to 45 minutes. That is an everyday thing for my four-year-olds. That just happens all the time. And they're not on a bus with just their friends. They're on a bus with other kids who are screaming, crying, punching windows, and having to deal with other behaviors. That's a reality for us in pre-K. I don't have, I have currently zero out of 17 kids who will sit and work independently. I have zero out of 17 kids who will transition with little to no support. I have zero out of 17 kids who will go to specials or lunch without me. My students require 100% of my support 100% of the day. It isn't feasible. We are struggling in sped and in pre-K. Our numbers are too high. We really do need some extra support in having our numbers and our class sizes lower. First grade's numbers should never be lower than ours, especially when I have 100% of those IEPs. And if you guys are familiar with the IEPs, the amount of goals and objectives and things to have to do with those kids is a lot. So, having to do that with 17 other kids is a lot to have to do in one classroom for one person. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your story with us.
Michelle Cochran.
Welcome, Ms. Cochran. Thank you so much for being here.
Okay. So, like you said, I'm Michelle Cochran. I also teach early childhood special education. I'm at Grace Warner. I'm here to advocate for my little students, because they cannot, and also myself and my assistant. This is my second year in this position, but I've taught special education for 17 years. I have two master's degrees in special education. One is special education, one is specifically early childhood. 12 of my years have been in self-contained classrooms with all elementary-age children. But after five years of resource, I really missed having my own class, and I got my second master's and back into the early childhood classroom. I love my job. I love watching my students grow and become more independent. I love seeing them learn to communicate. I love hearing the parent stories when they say, "I'm seeing a difference at home, and he's talking so much more." You know, I love hearing that. But these children face challenges every day that are social, emotional, and academic, and I love it, and I'm good at it. But that said, there are some serious issues that need to be addressed if we want to keep kids safe and retain highly qualified teachers in these positions. One of the biggest concerns I have is the last two years is following the state and federal guidelines around class size. We are now being told that we can have up to 18 students in a single classroom, even though every one of those child, children, like she mentioned, are on an IEP and are qualified for at least two areas to be in this program. I just got student number 18 today. I'm exhausted. The federal guideline recommends that a maximum of 12. Two years ago, the district came up with a early childhood team, and they came up with a cap of 14, but that has not been followed. At my school, we regularly have between 18 to 22 At my school, we regularly have between 18 to 22 students. They said that if we trigger an allocation, we can have 22 students, even if we don't hire somebody or even interview somebody. My students, just like she said, are ages three to five. Many are not potty-trained. I have seven that are not potty-trained right now. Behavior challenges, autism, require constant support for communication and mobility. They require moderate to maximum support for all activities. And this is a problem for full-day programs. A lot of times, half-day programs only get 12 to 13 because they have half-day, their caseload is 24. So, they don't face some of the same problems. But still, a caseload of 24 is a lot when you're teaching full day and you have to do a caseload of 24. This is not just overwhelming for my assistant and I, but it's unsafe. It's physically impossible to meet the needs and IEP goals and accommodations of that many young children with disabilities in a way that's developmentally appropriate for everyone in the room. We also need much more consistent and transparent communication about staffing allocations and how they're triggered when we go over the cap. After kind of speaking with some other EC teachers, we found out that we're told different things, varied by site.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cochran. We really appreciate it, though.
I also emailed. Oh, and thank you for two trustees coming to visit my school.
Amanda Stewart.
Welcome, Ms. Stewart. Thank you so much for being here.
I'm Amanda Stewart. I'm a critical labor shortage teacher over at Alice Smith Elementary. I'm also an early childhood education teacher, just as these women are. I have a full-day program as well with 17 children. I have 50-pound five-year-olds, and I have 20-pound three-year-olds. Picture your baby coming in at a three-year-old at a 20-pound weight, getting pushed over by a five-year-old. Picture that. Picture the fact that if they're hanging from a little jungle gym and they're swinging, getting kicked. Picture them pushing on purpose. Picture them pushing by accident. And I want just that alone for you to think about, the fact that when there's three- through five-year-olds, that does not make sense. We are being given babies coming in at three years old with kids who are almost going into kindergarten, almost six years old. That alone, and them all on IEPs with behavior issues, makes it very unsafe for these children. I've taught 30 years. I am now critical labor shortage going back. Now, I'm being told that not only, not only is your pay being cut, but you no longer have sick days, and you have all of these children coming in who are sick, 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 sick. But, oh, if you take a day off, all of a sudden, you don't have a sick day. So, I want those things to be considered, not only critical labor shortage issues, but the fact that we have people all over who are doing those positions who are not critical labor shortage, but are subs, who are writing IEPs when they have no idea what they're doing, and they're not certified to do that. But yet, tons of people are not going to go back and be critical labor shortage teachers in special education positions when that's been cut. Not only has that been cut, but you're having, who do you think's writing those IEPs? If you don't have a critical labor shortage teacher who knows how to do it, writing them? It's the subs who don't know what they're doing, writing them. It's other people taking over those jobs for those people. I'm feeling very passionate right now because I'm watching people who don't know how to write an IEP, who are obviously very, very important documents, litigiously important documents, being written by people. Or there's everyone taking up the slack for others, trying to write those for other teachers who are not qualified to write them. Think of those things when you think of all of the children with autism, all of the children with physical and emotional difficulties. Think about the fact that your baby, three-year-old, is going in for her very, very first time in school with five-year-olds who are learning about rhyming, and they're still learning to sit for two minutes. They can't open their lunches. They can't, they're not potty-trained, as they've said. I have seven out of my 17 kids who are not potty-trained. My aide gets, my aide gets sick days, and I now don't. I find this atrocious. And I also find that you're going to already have more problems filling the positions. You did not fill the positions this year. You had, you had multiple substitutes, multiple substitutes. And they were multiple in one day? I mean, in one, in one year, or the same year. Multiple people for one class.
Thank you very much, thank you very, very much, Ms. Stewart.
David Thaxton.
Welcome, Mr. Paxton. Thank you for hanging with us.
I think we may all be talking about the same thing, but in different ways. Greetings, Superintendent Ernst, President Smith, and esteemed board members. My name is David Thaxton, and I am the Critical Needs Music Teacher at Dietrichson Elementary School in Sparks. I have taught for 30 years in Nevada before retiring, with 27 of those years here in Washoe County as a general music teacher and mentor. In addition to bachelor's and master's degrees in music education, I'm also Orshulwork and World Music Drumming certified. And as an AOSA certified teacher trainer, I spend my summers and many weekends training music teachers around the country in the processes of student-centered and engaged general music instruction. I serve on the executive boards of our local chapter that provides professional development for our local teachers. And also, I sit on the board of the American Center for, American Center for Elemental Music and Movement, in which we provide support for music teachers and their professional development nationwide. In short, I have dedicated my life and career to the expertise in enriching the quality of music education in our schools. And it saddens me to even say this, but with the new classification of critical needs as a guest teacher position, I am seriously considering walking away from public school. My passion in teaching is my student, is teaching my students on a daily basis. And it is with great pride that I look back on the thousands of young lives that I have impacted with deeply meaningful instruction. But at this point in my life, I need to consider the health and financial needs of myself and my family while I am still able and at the top of my professional game. The offer put forth by the district last week not only makes it likely that I will not be returning to teach in unfilled positions, but it guarantees that many of my colleagues in similar situations will also be leaving that classroom for good. Shifting the critical needs positions to guest teacher positions has a lot of disincentives for all of us as critical needs teachers to remain. In addition to having a significant pay cut, we will incur the cost of insurance, lowering our effective take-home pay significantly. Many of my colleagues who are also highly trained and highly skilled teacher will get no credit for the advanced degrees and certifications that they've worked so hard to attain over their careers. This hardly seems fair. Furthermore, by removing leave time and making these positions at will day-to-day employment, incentives to make strong programs in classrooms with long-term goals and vision have all but evaporated. I love to teach. My critical colleague, my critical needs colleagues love to teach. But at the end of the day, this shift in policy is going to push away high-quality teachers while teaching positions remain unfilled. Thank you for your time, your service, and your attention.
Thank you for your time and service and attention, Mr. Paxton.